I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, maybe please have a roll call.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Litt.
Here.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
No ma'am, no.
Okay. And I'm looking for a pen. Here we go. I would like to recognize two special groups that we have here tonight. First would be Cub Scout PAC 176. Their den leader is Ebony Taylor, and they are here tonight as part of their Build a Better World Achievement. Please stand up.[71.22][71.22](APPLAUSE). And second, I'd like to welcome Boy Scout Troop 13. Their scout master is Steve Steinmetz, and they are here tonight working on their Citizenship in the Community Merit badge. Welcome to you all, thanks for attending. Please stand up.[93.03][93.03](APPLAUSE). Now, you're welcome to stay and listen to the whole meeting if you like. If you don't want to, that's okay too.[103.22][103.22](LAUGHING). So, we have some announcements and presentations, and first on our list is Palm Beach North Brand Initiative, Beth Kegel from Palm Beach North. Hi Beth.
Hello. How are you? Great, thank you Mayor and members of the council and administration for having me this morning. I really wanted to give you an update on the Palm Beach North Florida's Prosperity Coast Initiative, and we all are Palm Beach North. About a year ago, I guess it was exactly April 26th last year, we had the big launch of the Palm Beach North brand, and the city was present and accounted for, as were all nine of our other municipalities and other stakeholders from the business sector, education, and arts and culture among others. That was a process, just to give you a little history for those of you that are somewhat new to the council, that was a process that involved over 100 stakeholders. We brought in a consultant under the Chamber umbrella to develop a brand that could be used for the 10 municipality region to market the entire region for businesses as well as visitors to the region. The reason that came about was because of feedback from the Business Development Board, as well as Discover the Palm Beaches, that they really needed to have some cohesive messaging for the region. So we did that, took us three years because we gave it its time to make sure that we had full stakeholder buy-in, and then a year ago, we launched at FAU's Jupiter Campus, Palm Beach North Florida's Prosperity Coast. The city of Palm Beach Gardens is a stakeholder in all of this, so I thought it would only be fair and proper to give you an update on how things are going. We dedicated this first year post-launch to our web assets. So by June 30th, we do this by Chamber fiscal years, so by June 30th, we're actually going to have a complete refresh of the PalmBeachNorth.com website, including the deliverables that we promised of three modules. One is an education module, one is an arts and culture module, and the other is residential real estate. And what's particularly special about this, for example, in the education module that's going to be released, if you are looking to relocate employees into the area, for example, or you're a business planning to maybe relocate into the area, you can actually go to the website, and you can look at career paths from kindergarten all the way through to 12th grade by Palm Beach North schools. So for example, if you have a child that's interested in a healthcare track, you can go to this module, and you can click on healthcare, and you can see every Palm Beach North school in the public school system from kindergarten through 12th grade that has a program in the healthcare track. So it's a very unique way of showing that. On the residential real estate track, it's also organized by type of lifestyle. If you know, you can work in Palm Beach Gardens, and you can live in multiple lifestyles, whether it's in the city or outside, within a 15-minute drive. So you could be Jupiter Farms and have a rural lifestyle, you can be in the Landmark and have a condominium lifestyle, you can have a Gulf Community Lifestyle, et cetera, and work in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. So you'll actually be able to look at communities by lifestyle, instead of having to look at an MLS by city. So if you're looking to move into the area, you can get a really good idea of all the various lifestyles that we have to offer, which is pretty unique to our region. And then arts and culture, as you know, is a very important draw to the region, and you could actually take a look and see what a typical day might look like on a weekend for a family when you come to move into the region. So those are things that the Business Development Board and Discover the Palm Beaches are very interested in, and those will be launched in addition to a complete refresh of the sites. You'll see a little bit of a different look and feel, and we hope that you'll really enjoy that. Given the fact that we will have web assets that we feel very, very good about, and that we intended to deliver, we're going to start marketing the region. So for example, the Business Development Board has their profile magazine, you will see the very first full-page ad for Palm Beach North Florida's Prosperity Coast in the new profile magazine. Also, Florida Trend is doing a feature on Palm Beach County in their October edition, and Palm Beach North will be prominently featured. They were very excited about the ability for 10 municipalities and various sectors within a region to be able to come together with one voice. They thought that was very, very impressive. Coupled with some of the wonderful developments that have happened in the region, it's an area for smart growth, and that's something that's very interesting to Florida Trend and its readers. So with that being said, I just wanted to say thank you. I can tell you that even when you speak with, say, the governor and other various entities that look at what's happening in the region, they say it's just very unique to have this level of collaboration, and it's something that we're very, very proud of, and I hope that you are too, and we enjoy this relationship, and we thank you very much for your engagement. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Beth?
No Beth, but I just want to say, we are Palm Beach North.
Oh, you took it from me. All right, everyone together, we are Palm Beach North.
And Florida's Prosperity Coast, which everything is trademarked by the way, we own all of that, so that's also some good news.
Beth, I was happy to be part of the process, and thank you for updating us.
Thank you.
Next, we have recognition of first-place award for Palm Beach Gardens Police Explorers at the 2017 Gulf Stream Council Regional Competition.[471.65][471.65](APPLAUSE). You can all clap, it's good.[476.12][476.12](APPLAUSE). They did a great job, you can all clap.[480.02][480.02](APPLAUSE).
For the record, my name is Sergeant Jeffrey Sewell, from the Palm Beach Gardens Police Department, Community Involvement Unit. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. It's our distinct privilege and honor to introduce our competition team for the Police Explorer Post #704. To my left, we have Captain William Bootsbuck, Lieutenant Dina Ferris, Lieutenant James Ordóñez, Sergeant Joseph Herzog, Sergeant Hunter Bradford, all led by Officer Jason Sharon. These five explorers compete in the law enforcement challenge for the 2017 year at the Martin County Fairgrounds on April 8th. In this region, which extends from Indian River County to the south of Palm Beach County, there were 10 competing posts with over 130 participating explorers. The competitions included 11 police scenario-based events, and I'm going to list them for you here. We have active shooter, airsoft rifle, building search, domestic intervention, drill and ceremony, high-risk traffic stop, physical abilities test, police bicycle, sit-ups, standardized field sobriety, and traffic stops. All these events were designed to provide typical challenges that police officers face in their duties. These events were judged by career law enforcement officers from the competing posts. And after the scorecards were tabulated, we scored first place in five out of 11 events. Overall, our explorer posts achieved first place in the entire regional competition. We're very proud of our explorers, and we're looking forward to the upcoming state competition in June of this year. Thank you.
Thank you.[589.29][589.29](APPLAUSE). Can we get a picture? Okay, next on our agenda, District at the Gardens presentation. Thank you all for being here.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. It's my honor to be here today on behalf of Madison Marquette and ShopCor. ShopCor is the new owner of Downtown at the Gardens, and we're going to give you just a quick preview this evening of the great potential that this world-class site has. We're going to give you a quick look into some of our visioning, and an opportunity to transform the existing Downtown at the Gardens into what we refer to as the district, and make a world-class mixed-use development adjacent to a world-class mall in a world-class city at a world-class site. This is a really exciting opportunity. You'll be hearing from Whitney Livingston and Chuck Taylor with Madison Marquette. They have been brought in by ShopCor. We have three representatives from ShopCor who have flown in today from Chicago simply to demonstrate not only their support and commitment to this project, but their commitment to deliver something very, very special to the city of Palm Beach Gardens, and to collaborate with the city as we move forward with transforming an asset that's in decline to being something that's world-class, that will be recognized certainly across the state of Florida. So this is very exciting. Madison Marquette, and I'll let them tell you a little bit about themselves, but they are experts at developing really world-class mixed-use development. Some of the ones that you might know are the Mikado in Naples, Bell Tower in Fort Myers, or the Wharf in DC, all very, very special places, not only with great opportunities to have environment and experience, but great placemaking. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Whitney and Chuck.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and administration for allowing us to be here tonight. Delighted to be here. I want to spend a few minutes, and I'll be brief with this, to walk you through a little bit of a preview of what we're working on at the District at the Gardens. Don had mentioned first ownership of ShopCor as a national owner of retail real estate throughout the country, approximately 18 million square feet coast-to-coast. They are the surviving entity from XL Trust, who purchased the property from the Berman's, and it was rolled up with a number of other assets into what's now known as ShopCor. As Don mentioned, Madison Marquette, we've been around for 25 years. We're in the business of developing and redeveloping special places really, and mixed-use assets throughout the country to provide places for the community to go to.
So really quickly, we have been working behind the scenes on Downtown for just about a year, looking at the project as it sits today, the market, voids in the marketplace, working with some of the best-in-class providers, including world-renowned architects, as well as local experts like Brian Seymour, Steve Matheson, and of course, Don Herring, to ultimately inform a plan, conceptual plan, that we're going to show you today. So we'll talk a little bit about our approach, the current project, our vision, and then show you what we think is incredibly impactful, which is the before and afters of Downtown at the Gardens to the District at the Gardens. So very quickly, about 80% of what you'll see today happened in our visioning process, which is ultimately where we do market research, as I mentioned, really try to understand what's happening with current tenants in the marketplace, as well as, as many of you know, there's been a lot of evolution in retail today, and that has all informed the vision that we've developed and will present for Downtown at the Gardens. Next was branding, and as you probably noticed, we have a new name for the project, the District at the Gardens. We believe that this symbolizes a change at the property, but also pays homage to this incredible real estate and community that the property is located within at the Gardens. The next is commitment. As we've discussed tonight, we have ShopCor here, they have made a commitment to invest in this project and its transformation. Next is activation, and we all know that when a property is under construction, there's disruption. So we have something special, which we call activation, that's both B2B and B2C. So B2C is making sure that we're hosting events, community outreach, and having more reasons for people to come to the project during construction to keep it relevant and active. From a B2B perspective, one of the very innovative things that ShopCor has done is they're using virtual reality to help design and market the project. And then lastly is leasing. Our major national, actually international convention is the International Shopping Center Council Meeting, RECON, next month, or this month, sorry, in two weeks, in Las Vegas, and we will be premiering this project, unveiling this project with that virtual reality tour, as well as a fly-through to ultimately launch the project there.
So I want to talk a little bit about where the project is today. So some of the challenges we have today is we have a significant percentage of vacant space in there. Approximately half the tenants are on some sort of unsustainable course related to their overall business model, and we have almost two-thirds of the project leases coming up between now and 2019. So the timing is now to do something there. In addition to that, it also, it turns us back on the waterfront, and there's some inherent design flaws there that we think we can greatly enhance. So that's kind of the tough part of it. The good news is, we have what I call unduplicatable real estate. This is as good as it gets to find this kind of asset in South Florida. We have one of the highest-performing movie theaters in South Florida. Whole Foods is very strong, and has also made another commitment to invest in their store again, and is going to do a complete upgrade on their store. And not to mention the fact that we've got a great demographic here from a consumer standpoint, and we've got great traffic patterns to get there. So we've got all the fundamentals in place to make this work.
So as I mentioned, we've done quite a bit of market research, and I know we have limited time tonight, but all of what we're showing you today was informed by the research that we've conducted over the last year. This is our vision for the District at the Gardens. I won't read this to you, but I will just call out that we ultimately, as Don said, want to provide a world-class magnetic destination that will have 18 hours a day, that will capitalize on the strengths that Chuck just mentioned, Whole Foods, Cobb Theaters, Yard House, and truly create a place that people want to come and stay.
So this will be a complete transformation for the asset, and we're hopeful of transformation for Palm Beach Gardens in general as well. We've looked at all four corners of the property and looked at everything on the inside, so a comprehensive redo from a master plan standpoint. Our vision is to add a class A office space to it, add a boutique hotel, as well as a residential tower. I think that these synergy of the various uses gives us the opportunity to create that true destination, and give the opportunity for consumers to experience the property on an 18-hour day basis. We also plan on doing a whole lot with the amenities. We want to take the public spaces and make those very active and very engaging. We want to create the right promenades and engage the waterfront, and do the kind of things that will make this a place where people are going to want to come and spend time there. We're proposing driving a street right to the middle of the project, in addition to some of the other things. So this is a view currently of the west side of the project, and if you'll see, retailers look for visibility, access, and signage, and this particular view will give you an opportunity to see that that just doesn't exist as it looks today. Pretty imposing structure, so what we're proposing to do is take those structures down. We call it uncorking the bottle, open it up to provide for transversing the project by pedestrians and cars as well into the center of the project, open it up, and make it a vibrant project inside and out. So this is Center Court today, which is a bit underwhelming. It's overwhelming in size, but underwhelming in terms of utilization today. So we think we can greatly improve on this by creating a much tighter feel, a much more synergistic feel on the inside. So this is our new look at Center Court, which will be significantly more scaled up, so we'll have retail, and we're proposing a boutique hotel on top of the retail right at Center Court to give it some of the vibrancy that it wants. I think the customers of the hotel, both the business travelers as well as recreational travelers, will really appreciate this type of an asset here. So this is another look at one of the entryways, and they're relatively imposing, as I mentioned earlier, and I think we can greatly improve that just by deconstructing those and creating a much easier area to traverse. This once again is another view of Center Court, highly-activated plazas, we want places for people to gather there, for people to spend their leisure time. People like to see and be seen. We say the only thing you can't buy online today is an experience, and so if people want to interact with other people, and if we create those kind of places where they can come and spend time, the elongated stays translate to additional dollars spent in stores as well, and the restaurants. This is Lake Victoria Drive, looking north. Once again, it's a relatively vanilla experience today, and we turn our back on the waterfront. We actually have our dumpsters facing that way, and not much else, and we think that that could be greatly improved upon. So we're turning the storefronts out towards the water. We want to take the carousel and put it out in the public space out there, and make it active out there. And with this, where people come up in their car and see this and say, "I want to get out of my car and walk and be a part of this experience. This is such a nice place to go to." Once again, this is another look, just what we call the entry feature, and this is our new look here with the lake interaction. Currently, we've got an eight-foot concrete retaining wall that says, "Please don't get near me, I'm the water here." And so what we want to do is take that down, put glass panels in there, stair-step the concrete down to the lake, make it interactive, bring the storefronts out. You see where we've got proposed for Yard House, glass structure, what we call it a rival statement, or a hello moment to say, people say, "I'm here, this looks like fun, I want to be a part of this."
So from a merchandising strategy, we think elevating the food and beverage offerings is really important. Also adding family entertainment, we know that the carousel is one of the main attractions at Downtown today. We think there's extreme opportunity to improve upon that for the families of both Palm Beach Gardens and the greater community. We've also looked at adding what we refer to as lifestyle service, spas, nail salon, as well as specialty retail. We believe that what we can create here will ultimately complement the Gardens Mall. We think we can have specialty retail at the project, that there are a number of retailers that prefer to be on the street, and we think we would be a great alternative for them, as well as fitness. As Chuck mentioned before, we're very dedicated to placemaking. We believe that the public space is just as important as the tenants that we put within the retail and the restaurant space, and so making sure that we have true community activation and engagement is a priority for us through this process. And there's just some more images of placemaking, again, very focused on how we can engage with the waterfront. So obviously, next steps, we're here today, this is our launch, we are very excited to be here, and again, thank you, and we consider this our first opportunity to start collaborating with the council, city staff, and the community to ensure that ultimately what we build is what the city wants and needs, and we're just very excited about the opportunity. So our goal is to go to RECON, which I mentioned before, at the end of this month. We will then continue to refine our design plans, have community involvement, and ultimately look forward to submitting this summer our initial application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? I'd actually like to make a comment, and you heard me say this earlier, I was on a radio program yesterday, and the hostess of the program said to me, "Did you know that the carousel at Downtown at the Gardens is the third most visited attraction in Palm Beach Gardens?" And then I went on TripAdvisor today, and it turns out that just Downtown is the fifth attraction, and the Cool Beans Indoor Cafe is the sixth, so you need to include that when you're going forward.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Also, I want to tell you, you picked excellent people to help you here, local people. Don Herring is highly respected, as is Brian Seymour and Steve Matheson, so I'm sure they'll take good care of you.
Thank you. We agree. Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have items of resident interest and board committee reports. Who wants to go first? Carl?
I'm going to go first.
Sure.
Good evening, everybody. I know for me, this was, actually, I saw everybody everywhere. We were all over the place, it was a very busy month for me. I usually don't like to go over to all the meetings that we've all been to, because it's, we're going to duplicate each other, and I know the mayor does a great job with that. But I didn't want to move on without saying that Maria, you did an outstanding job with the State of the City address.
Thank you.
It's such a complex issue, and to have that tossed on you in such a short period of time, it was, you suited the position, and it went well. And Rochelle, you did a great job presenting with the opiate addiction, sitting up there with the panel of doctors, and your intelligent level on that is really good. I'd like to briefly go over the things that I've been, I want to start with Ironwood Park, Angela Brown. You have no idea how many, and staff, you have no idea how many phone calls I'm getting, even last night. People are calling me saying that, this is, I don't know what time, 7:00, 7:30, they're saying, "Carl, the park is stuffed." And, you know, going back a couple weeks ago, just after it opened, some person called me on the phone, and they're like, "Carl?" I'm like, "Yes." I never know if it's going to be good or bad, so this was good. I'm sitting at the stop sign on Ironwood right now at Holly Drive, and there is a train of mothers and kids. I can't even go, because everybody's crossing in front of me. So I know that it was a hit, and I thank you, and I know the community thanks you through myself, and I wanted to pass that on, that you did a fabulous job. I know we don't, there's been some topics of discussion on shade, I think we're addressing that, and a drinking fountain, I'm not sure if that's on our short budget right now, but, you know, there is water out there, but don't drink it, because it's just a sprinkler of the grass, please.[1706.61][1706.61](LAUGHING). And then I would like to continue, when I can, with that pocket park idea. There might be some areas within the city that we can put in a little pocket park that might make that little part of the community, that instead of driving some distance, they can walk to it, just like in this plat, maybe another plat, it's just a thought of mine. Next, Crystal Gibson. You're not going unrecognized either, the beautification code enforcement, the work that you're doing in that area is not going unnoticed either, it's starting to show promise that we're getting them collectively together on the same page, either with resurfacing, I drove over there today, and I know it's work in progress, so again, I'm getting phone calls on that, because when I started last year, it was a topic, and I appreciate, and I'm getting the same thing through Angela, I'm getting feedback from the citizens, so I thank you, and I appreciate the good work, and the citizens are thanking you through myself, so thank you very much for the work in that area. That's that. So probably most of you know I've been a traffic cop for pretty much all of my life, so we're, I have some projects going on with, I'm not even sure the council knows this, with Department of Transportation. We're going to try to... We're going to try and remove traffic from PGA Boulevard. We know we have another off-ramp coming on Central sooner or later. And myself and Todd has, Todd, there you are. Myself and Todd has given a presentation to Department of Transportation on a simplified resolution on how to remove traffic. The state already owns the land on PGA Boulevard. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves at this moment, but it's, it's work in progress. We've presented it to the PGA corridor, and they are on board. And hopefully, with Department of Transportation's projects with Northlake and the expansion of the flyover from the alternate as it merges onto I-95 southbound, they will realize that they have enough money so to relieve the traffic from PGA and military. It's, it's very simple, they have the money, they own the land, there's electrical in place. I also have another idea on how to relieve the traffic off of Congress, which bleeds onto Northlake Boulevard, but that involves an, an off-ramp somewhere on 95, so it's really not in the city. And that's just uniquely what I did myself, besides being with my council members literally everywhere. I had a good month, but I'll end it with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Carl. How about you, Rochelle?
Okay. Put your mic on. That's not, there, there we go. Okay. So as Carl mentioned, it was a very busy month for all of us. And I started the month by attending a Sober Homes Task Force meeting on April 7th. I attended a second Sober Homes Task Force meeting on the 28th of the month. And as of yesterday, the governor just called a state of emergency, so it looks like we're going to get some of the funding that we're going to need to address this issue. On April 12th, there was a PGA Corridor Association breakfast, which our mayor Moreno did a great job explaining the state of the city. April 13th, Carl mentioned this, I was a panelist representing pharmacy for the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce. They had a healthcare committee breakfast, and the panel was on the impact of pain opiates and depression in our community. April 19th was the Chamber of Commerce breakfast on the economy of sports in our community, and the amount of money that they actually generate for us. April 26th, there was a League of Cities luncheon and workshop for new officials. Most of us were at that. And then there was the Palm Beach Gardens Rehab Facility Open House. And this one's kind of special. Oh, I don't have to keep holding it. Well, that's good. I want to thank the city manager and the city staff. On April 28th, they made it possible for Gift of Life to have a table in the community center, in the recreation center, in the hallway out front during the employee health fair. It was open to the public. Gift of Life does cheek swabs to find matches for bone marrow transplant and stem cell transplants. We have a resident of Palm Beach Gardens, Manny Valdez, who was diagnosed in February with AML, which is acute myelocytic leukemia. It's a rare blood disease, and Manny is looking for a donor match. And a little bit about Manny, he's a father of two, 42 years old, and it would be great if we could find a match for him right here in our community. And so it's just a cheek swab. I want to thank all of the employees that did it, and the rest of the community members that came. If you didn't know about it, the, the Post and, and TV news programs did cover it, but if you didn't hear about it, you can contact Gift of Life, they'll send you a kit, takes two minutes to, to do it at home, and maybe we can find Manny a match here.
I'm going to be very brief. I attended the PGA Corridor Association breakfast, the Chamber of Commerce breakfast, the North Palm Beach, or the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, which I've been on for about 10 years. I attended opening the Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center Rehabilitation Facility and the League of Cities lunch. There's an issue I'm going to talk about later, and it's going to deal with the structure of our agenda, but I think I'll handle that under items for council action, but it's something that I think is really important, and I'm going to deal with it at the appropriate time tonight.
Mark?
Well, we were all at a lot of the same events. I had nine places that we went to in the last month, which I think is a lot, which is great. Couple that weren't mentioned, Cooper Hawk, it's a great restaurant in, in the mall. My wife and I have been there a couple of times after taking the kids to soccer practice, so I'd recommend it for anybody, it's great. We did go to, I was the only one that went to the State College Earth Day. And it was a great, great event, it was an Earth Day event. College campuses are great, even our Palm Beach State College, which maybe not as large as some of the large universities. But this was, the winning poster, this was a note from Angela Allen, who's the student activities manager. I asked her to make us a copy so we could maybe put it in the chamber somewhere. It's a pretty neat poster, we'll just leave it up front for everybody, but said, "Please accept the winning poster on Earth Day Celebration 2018. I look forward to working closely with the city in the coming year. Please send a text or phone call, let me know that you received it." So we will make sure we call and tell her we received it. We did get a chance to vote, and this was my vote, so I feel pretty, pretty cool that I voted on the winning poster. And the theme in 2018 for Earth Day is wind, so you can take a look at it and see where it comes from. So do you want to look at it? Cool. And the last thing I did was I went to the golf tournament for the Gardens High School, and Maria, and Scott, and former mayor Bert Primero, so cheated to get second place. So there you go.
No, if we were to cheat, we would have won.
We didn't cheat enough, right?
There you go. Well, there's 16 items on my list, but since we've covered how many of them, we've all gone together. Yeah. I do want to say that I was honored to present the city's State of the City address for the PGA Corridor Association. And I invite all of our residents and businesses to look it up. The presentation is on the city's website, and it just gives you a snapshot of our future. So I invite you to visit our website and check that out. Let's see, Chamber, Cooper's Hawk Winery, and then went back for dinner, as Mark said. And it was nice to see someone who came in front of us, in front of council a while back, and now in business. It's always a good thing for us to see the finished product. Friend of mine is in the audience tonight, Renee Layman, and I just want to thank her. I attended the Childhood, Adversity, and Trauma Breakfast. Renee is with the Center for Child Counseling, and at this event, it brought to light many of the childhood traumas that shape our children, and we were educated on ways to deal with those adversaries, adversities. So thank you. Metropolitan Planning Organization, updates were given on Palm Tran, the Bright Line, US One Intermodal Study. And this all, this all may sound boring and trite, what we're talking about, but a lot of these meetings give us some information to make good decisions in the future, and help shape us and our thought processes, and also yours, and what legislation might be going on here locally, or through the, at the county, or the state level with our partnership with the League of Cities. So if you will indulge me for a couple more seconds, I will continue my list. Economic Forum Luncheon, I attended along with Mark, and we had a presentation given by former United States Senator George Lemieux about the Florida economy and current regulations, which was very apropos, considering we're now dealing with an additional homestead exemption, and Enterprise Florida might not get funding. So it really is important to attend these items. Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, I am now a board member, and I was happy to hear that the Palm Beach, City of Palm Beach Gardens will be receiving a $120,000 transit-oriented development grant, uh, grant for the Tri-Rail station that is slated to be here in Palm Beach Gardens. And I would like to thank all of the vendors that came out to help and, help and improve the health of our staff at our City Health and Wellness Expo, as you heard Rochelle talk about. I have a shout-out to golf professional Sherry Pla, but I think there'll be, you'll hear more about that. I did attend a Q and A with the residents of Old Palm, so we are out there, there is now a speakers bureau. If you would like a member of the council to come and address your homeowners association, or a business of yours, we have a speakers bureau. And I was, I spoke in front of the Town of Jupiter and the Village of North Palm Beach to gain their support for the District Park. You'll hear more about that later also, and I'm just happy to say that they all, they're on board. So we now have all of the North End mayors in support of our being the less, what's the right word? Lesser for the District Park? Lesser?
Lacy.
Lacy?
Where's the Lacy?
Lacy? Lacy operator, thank you. And lastly, I appeared on the radio program for Palm Beach Score, where the, the host, Penny Pompey, and I spoke at the City of Palm Beach Gardens, being such a great place to start a small business, and what we have that is attracting families and businesses to our communities. So everything that we do, it's just sort of a collection of information. So sometimes it takes a couple more minutes to hear it, and I'm guessing that some of our council members want to move it to the end of the agenda. So I'm done with what I've just said, and I will now go to the next item on our agenda, which is comments from the public for items not on the agenda. And I only have two cards in front of me. Are there, Patty, do we have any more cards? That's it? Okay. Eric Javlin, please come to the podium, and after Eric is Michelle Lewis.
Hello, council. How are you?
Three minutes, please.
I wasn't going to have Patty turn the timer on, but what are you going to do?
Where do you live?
For the record, Eric Javlin, 184 Thornton Drive, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, city attorney, city manager, Elise, Alicia, and Patricia Snyder, all my good friends, it's really a pleasure to be up here tonight. I have a few things I want to talk to you about. Firstly, I want to congratulate you all for your elections and your positions now of leadership. This is a great city, and you're finding out how hard this job really is. Having done it for 25 years, it's easy for me, but I've learned a lot over a long period of time, and it's a lot for you to absorb so quickly. And so I wish you all the best. You've got some challenging things coming up in front of you. Tonight's presentation was amazing. Oh, they're not here. Don's here, okay. And, and some of the exciting things that are going to happen in the Gardens are just truly fantastic. And I know you're going to do a great job, I really do. You are all wonderful people, and you have what I have developed over all these years of love for this city, and I, I know you all do. So I, I really appreciate the, the, the good jobs you're all going to do. I'm here tonight on a mission. I noticed in your agenda that there is a proclamation on the consent agenda for Municipal Clerks Week. And so I want you to vote for that. But I, I created my own proclamation, so I'm going to read it to you right now. This is a, it's not really a proclamation from the city, it's from me, but it has a heading, but anyway, it says, "Whereas the office, the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas municipal clerks serves as information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually serve to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through the participation, in, through their participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Eric Javlin, former mayor of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, do hereby state that it has been my honor, privilege, and distinct pleasure to have worked with Patricia Snyder, the city clerk of the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the past 17 years. And I have found her to be honest, trustworthy, fair, compassionate, loyal, courageous, courteous, creative, diligent, diplomatic, decisive, enthusiastic, brilliant, brave, frank, friendly, funny, generous, it goes on, gregarious, hard-working, helpful, humorous, imaginative, independent, intelligent, inventive, kind, patient, pioneering, plucky. Good word. Professional, rational, reliable, resourceful, sensible, sincere, sympathetic, thoughtful, and tough when she has to be. Understanding, warm-hearted, and overall a really terrific person and a good friend. Thank you, Patty, for all your years of service to this city, and for all the years of friendship that I will always treasure. Thank you, Patty.
You know, usually she does these things. I have to, I have to look up to her standing.
Eric, that was very, very well said. Well, I see we're losing the Boy Scouts. Thank you for coming this evening. Good luck in the future. Work hard, stay in school, study, sports, all good things. Did you earn your badge? Did you have to stay a certain amount of time?
Just, yeah, the whole year.
Oh, well, then you got to come back. All right. Next on our agenda, the city manager report. Oh, I apologize, we have another card. Michelle Lewis?
Officer Resurrection Number 38, is on the agenda, so will we speak now or later?
Nope, later we'll be fine. Sorry, I, it says yes, and, okay. No problem. We'll see you in a bit. So, back to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members have a few items to bring to your attention today. We had a 2017 Take Back Day, a nationwide prescription drug turn-in event on Saturday, and the police department, in cooperation with the DEA, completed a nationwide prescription drug turn-in called Take Back Day. The concept was to get the residents having a method where they can bring in their old, expired, unwanted prescriptions and dispose of them in a proper manner. Our police department collected 320 pounds of drugs. That included with the total DEA of the West Palm Beach District, not just the city, but the district, they brought in 3.64 tons, or 7,272 pounds of unwanted prescription drugs. The success of the event was also attributed to our Palm Beach Gardens explorers and our Citizen Mobile Patrol, who participated in the collection. Had a lot of positive contacts with people, bringing these drugs in to dispose of them, and our department is planning to join the DEA in the next take, take-back event, which will be sometime in the fall. Thank you, two-step in your department. Also, a few reminders, if you will. This Saturday, May 6th, at 1 o'clock, we have the Joseph R. Russo Athletic Complex Grand Opening.
Opening. We'll have a lot of activities going on, from pickleball, kick soccer, football, lacrosse, kite flying, and a free ice cream cone if you show up, so I know you don't want to miss that. In addition to that, we also have the green market moving on May 14th to the store self-storage, which will be an air-conditioned breezeway, and which becomes very successful every Sunday from 9:00 to 1:00 in the summer heat, so I just want to remind people of that. Also, we will be having our annual Memorial Day Ceremony on May 29th, Monday, at 9:00 a.m., right out here in Veterans Plaza. And also, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to announce to you that Sherri Pla, our PGA Pro at our San Hill Crane Golf Club, will receive the PGA Southeast Chapters 2016 Player Development Award for her steadfast golf, steadfast professionalism in the golf field. In addition to being recognized regionally for her work, she will also receive some national attention. This summer, the CBS special is set to broadcast. There's a broadcast produced by the PGA of America in a series called Turning Passion Into Profession, which will highlight selected PGA professionals in different employment roles and responsibilities across the country. The show's goal is to provide reviewers, viewers, with an aspiration look at the various career paths in the PGA profession, from head professionals to instructors to general managers, player development, entrepreneurship. Sherri was chosen to be one of those PGA pros showcased in this special. Filming was held this past Sunday at San Hill Crane Golf Club. Sherri worked with the junior elite golf team as they prepared for Sunday's tournament. The filming crew followed Sherri to highlight a day in her life of a public... in her life at a public course and PGA Golf League. We also had some very special celebrities that were interviewed, in addition to parents, children, city managers, mayors interviewed, those people who knew and know how Sherri works with the children of our community, and the way that she inspires them, and the manner in which they actually just love to be around her, because she's a lot of fun. She's not like a city manager, she's a lot of fun out there, and they just love coming every day. And here's a picture of Sherri giving some tips to Ricky Fowler at the Honda Classic, who's the Honda Classic champion. She's got a great sense of humor, and I think I want to just let you know that we're very fortunate to have Sherri with her. She has certainly earned the title of the Pied Piper of youth golf here in this city, and her smile, her enthusiasm, it's just infectious. If you're around her, you're just as happy as you can be. So, we look forward to the CBS special, Turning Passion Into Profession. It will air July 16th at 2:00 p.m. before the final round of the John Deere Classic. So, we'll keep you posted on any viewing parties we find out about, but this will be an international event, and Sherri will be featured as part of that. We're proud of you, Sherri. Thank you so much for all your hard work and the good work that you do with the youth out there in the golf, so thank you. I know you'll get even with me. You didn't know that was coming. Also, there have been some council members that have expressed a method by which they could communicate in the area of the public, and they want to get organized in how they could go about spending more time at HOAs, POAs, professional organizations, clubs, meetings, Chamber of Commerce, and how that could get organized. So, what we've put our heads together and came up with is a speakers bureau, and this would allow the public to make requests for certain topics or general discussions, and make those requests online or in person or on the phone to the city clerk's office. And we would compile these requests, get with the mayor, and say, "We have requests for someone to speak in the area of traffic enforcement," or "Someone wants to talk about sober homes," or "Someone who wants to talk about," which we got in today, by the way, "the council's position on I-95 and Central Boulevard." And instead of the public who does not understand the sunshine law, we can't have five elected officials going to an HOA meeting and talking about the council's position, which they haven't taken yet, on I-95 and Central Boulevard. So, we can vet these requests and take them to the mayor, and then we can decide, she can decide who is going to go speak and kind of share those opportunities. In the event that there is a desire to have all five of you at one place, Max will correct me if I'm wrong, it would require public notification, recording of the meeting, notification of the press, and availability, the general public, to attend. So, that creates a logistics issue for any one organization that wants to put five of you together. So, this is a mechanism, and it's also available online, so that we will have an organized approach to getting the right speaker with the right topic to the right community or club or organization. And unless you have issues, we're going to put this into effect right now and see if it works. We'll tweak it, twist it, turn it, and do whatever it is we have to do to make it work.
We add a... instead of just calling it a speakers tour, I'd like it to be a listeners' tour, or speaker slash listening tour.
We can name it anything you all want.
I don't want us to... I don't want people to feel like we're coming to tell the residents something. The impetus with us was to make sure that we get out to the community and we hear their concerns. So, it's great, I'm really happy that the city is doing it, but I want to make sure that the residents know that we're there just to hear their concerns, and certainly if there's a topic of interest of any particular community.
Additionally, as requests come in, if you would let all of us know what comes in so that we can all volunteer to do it as well. Thanks.
Certainly. With that, may the fourth be with you.
And with you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda, before I ask a motion to approve, I would like to actually pull from the consent agenda the Mental Health Awareness and Trauma Informed Care Month proclamation and bring Renee Layman up to give her the proclamation. Am I reading down there or up here? For those of you that don't know Renee Layman, she is the executive director of the Center for Child Counseling here in Palm Beach Gardens, and she's also a Class of 2010 alumni of Leadership Palm Beach County with me, so we have a warm relationship, and so when I saw this on the agenda, I took the mayor's prerogative to pull it. So, the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Palm Beach County, Florida proclamation, "Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overhaul, health, and well-being, and whereas everyone experiences times of stress and struggle in their lives, and whereas one in four adults and one in five youth ages 13 through 18 experience serious mental illness, and whereas 60% of adults and 50% of youth do not receive the treatment necessary for their mental health needs due to limited or no knowledge of the need, barriers to care, or fear and shame, and whereas research recognizes that adverse childhood experiences," in parentheses, "aces," "which include but are not limited to physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, physical and emotional neglect, household dysfunction, untreated mental health, or incarceration of a household member, domestic violence, and separation or divorce involving household members, are traumatic experiences that can have a profound effect on a child's developing brain and body, and can result in poor physical and mental health during childhood and adulthood, and whereas community understanding and available supports and services can greatly impact a person's ability to handle their stress and struggles and move forward, and whereas promoting mental health and wellness leads to higher overall productivity, better educational outcomes, lower crime rates, stronger economies, lower healthcare costs, improved family life, improved quality of life, and increased lifespan, and whereas studies show that the effective aces are felt by people regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status, and whereas each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, nonprofit agency, faith-based organization, and citizen shares accountability for the community's wellness... excuse me, the community's health needs and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County recognizes the impact of awareness and education, access to services, and acceptance of the importance of mental health and well-being to a person's overall success, and supports the implementation of trauma-informed approaches throughout the system of care. Now therefore, I, Maria G. Marino, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 27 as Mental Health Awareness and Trauma Informed Care Month. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, to be fixed on this fourth day of May in the year 2017. My dear friend. Thank you for indulging me. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to pull Resolution 35. There you go.
Okay. Discussion?
Do you want me to talk about it?
Sure.
Sure. Next year, the Fourth of July is going to hit on Wednesday. Our meeting would be the next day. The year after that, Fourth of July is going to fall on Thursday, which is actually when our meeting would be scheduled. I'd like to do some long-range planning so that people can actually plan their vacations, because I came within an hour of scheduling a trip on July, the week of July 13th. I mean, within an hour, which would have cost a fortune to rebook. So, I think let's make it so that our staff and us can plan in advance, so let's not only make it for July 13th of this year, but make it for the second Thursday next year in 2018, and also the second Thursday in 2019, and we'll all be able to go away for the Fourth of July with our families.
So, Max guidance, do we amend the consent agenda?
Well, what you should do, you've pulled Resolution 35, so you should entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Resolution 35, and then we'll deal with 35.
Okay, so, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Resolution 35?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, I need a second first.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda is approved, and further discussion on Resolution 35.
So, if it's the will of the council, then what you would do is we would just amend Resolution 35 to include that change in dates, so it's already changing it, you've got to change to... for this year to July 13th of 2017, and it's the intent of the council to change... what day would it be in '18?
The second.
It's the second Thursday.
Of every month.
Second Thursday of the month in '18 and in '19?
Correct.
And so, we just have a...
In '18, it would be 7/12/18, and in '19, it would be 7/11.
Okay, so, I have a motion to...
We need a motion to adopt Resolution 35, 2017, as amended.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 35 as amended.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mayor. Since it's been polled, I need to read the title.
Thank you.
Resolution 35, 2017, a resolution in the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the schedule of the regular city council meeting for the months of July 2017, and as amended, July 2018 and July 2019, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Now, may I have...
It's okay.
It's okay? We're done? Thank you, Patty. Do I need to vote on it now that she's reread it? No, we're done? We're good?
You're fine.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now that we've gone through all our proclamations and purchase awards and everything else, it's time for public hearing, and tonight we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. But I'm out of order.
No, ma'am, it's just on the following case, Resolution 31, 2017.
Alton Par... do I need to read this now, or do I read it when we're...
You read it now, because we're entering the public hearing.
Thank you. Resolution 31, 2017, Alton PCD Parcels DEF. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations, and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
All right, so we are, if I'm not mistaken, on Ordinance 11, 2017. Clerk, would you read the title, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 11, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development at Section 78-159 permitted uses, minor and major conditional uses, and prohibited uses, by repealing Table 21, permitted conditional and prohibited use chart, and re-adopting same as revised. To add specialty pet boarding, further amending Chapter 78 by repealing Section 78-221, 78-345, and 78-751, and re-adopting same as revised, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
That... no, that was in the... that was for a different item, that'll be later on in the agenda. Okay, so, I'd like to open the hearing, and it looks like I have a presentation from the petitioner. I should say, we have a presentation.
A brief one. Madam Mayor, for the record, Donaldson Hearing with Cotler and Hearing here tonight. On behalf of the applicant, Carrie Babcock, and her family are here. This is an applicant-initiated text amendment to amend the zoning code to address a use that's now becoming fairly common across our nation in terms of a new use that didn't exist many years ago, and that is specialty pet boarding and grooming. So, the applicant's requesting to amend various sections of the land development regulations, your LDRs, for the new use of specialty pet boarding within special, certain zoning districts, together with... zoning districts, together with providing additional special standards for that specific use in general. The applicant is seeking to open a specialty, a high-end luxury boarding, as well as social care for, for daycare for dogs, and cats, and household pets. This type of use really differs from the type of, more of a kennel-type of environment, to much more specialized environment, which also includes socialization, and pet grooming, in addition to just straight boarding that you might find in a kennel. And has no, it's in a, it's in a, no external activities, but also in a cage-free environment as compared to what most of us picture a typical kennel operation to be. So the sections of the code that are being modified, first include Section, or Table 78-159, dealing with the permitted uses, which provides for specialty pet grooming within the CG1, CG2 zoning districts, as well as providing for the use of, of this use within the industrial districts, so M1A, M, M1, as well as M2. In addition to, to this, the, the chart being modified to identify the use, there are several, what we call, performance standards that are being added in to ensure that the use is operated in the manner which we all anticipate. Those criteria, as you've read the staff report, your staff has gone to a great length to evaluate where other parts of the country, where this use has been introduced, other parts of our county, that where the, where the use has been introduced, and has provided a number of special provisions that will be required to be reviewed during the, the specific development review process. This use will be considered a conditional use within the CG1 and CG2 zoning districts, but it will be a major conditional use anywhere within the PGA corridor, and it provides a, certainly a much heightened level of review, which your staff provides, as you're well aware. Some of the provisions that are put in is first a limitation on size of 7,500 square feet, limitations to not be immediately adjacent to restaurants or food operations, providing requirements that the use be consistent with your own performance standards that are defined within your land development regulations, as well being consistent with the local county and state regulations that also apply. So we work very closely with your staff, we're very thankful the time that they have put into it, been a very, very thoughtful review process, and as we know here in Palm Beach Gardens, we love the city, our residents also love their pets, and they love to travel, so this really provides a, a great alternative. This was presented to your planning and zoning board, and was very, very well received as acknowledging a true need that we have here in this marketplace. So, with that, we'll conclude our presentation, and more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does staff have a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Staff's presentation is essentially the same information, since Mr. Herring presented in great detail the exact code language. Just want to reiterate and emphasize, what we're doing here this evening is proposing an ordinance that's going to establish a new use in the code, and that's it. We're not approving any specific establishment, there's no location that is being proposed before you this evening. That will come before you at another time, when the applicant has selected a site, and will have to demonstrate that they meet that criteria. So any project within the PGA Boulevard overlay, as Mr. Herring mentioned, as well as any project within any commercial zoning district, CG1, will also too have to come forward for major conditional use. So, Martin Fitz is sick this evening, but want to thank him for all of his hard work and research on this. He spent a great deal of time researching what other jurisdictions have done, and I think this code is, is an excellent example of, of collecting that information and putting in the best format. So, if you're listening, Martin, thank you, and staff recommends approval of, of Ordinance 11, 2017.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? I don't have any cards on Ordinance 11. If not, I'll close the hearing, and bring it back for discussion. Any council members like to say something?
Sure, I'm not all that excited about kennel, a high-end kennel even. The problems I see are noise, and I know that the dogs and cats are gonna be inside, but they're gonna have to be blocked or transported, so I'm worried about the noise, I'm worried about where the kennel's gonna be, is it gonna be near residences? I'm worried about odor, the fact that you're gonna have, as you walk the dogs in and out. I saw in the paper that they're talking about having it in, in the, near the Mirasol area. I could just see it being right where people are going shopping and things of that nature, and dog do on the, on the ground. I really don't want any of my family getting bitten by a dog on its way in and out. I certainly wouldn't want it, I don't think it's consistent with what we would need on the PGA corridor, so, those are just my observations on it.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Rochelle.
I have a question on Item M. It says, dogs, cats, and other household pets, as stated in the LDR. What other pets are we talking, these giant snakes? Are we, what, what goes in that category?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers Peter Hoffines, Planning and Zoning Department. Let me pull up. So, we define household pets as... Animals including dogs, cats, fowl, fishes, or reptiles, kept as part of a subordinate to a residential use. Poultry hoofed animals of any type, predatory animals, lions, tigers, oslets, pumas, and the like, or any animal which is normally raised to provide food, shall not be considered a household pet. So, this use would be restricted just to the household pets.
I just, I just like to clarify, the, so the, the term household pets is already an existing defined term, this is not a proposed definition, this is existing in our code, so we're simply cross-referencing that. And if there's a, you know, a specific reptile, for example, that's an exotic snake, that would actually not be permitted, because under the, the Palm Beach County ordinance that we also cross-reference, that would not be allowed. So, it's my understanding that this particular applicant, who will submit an application at some point to be vetted against the criteria and receive staff, or city council approval, would only like to provide for dogs and cats, and that is their own choice to, to limit it to that, but based on the code's provision of household pets, there is, it is an existing defined term, as it is, so.
As a follow-up, there will, there will be others who will be able to come in once we make this change, we'll have fish, fowl, and reptiles.
Right, according to the definition, there could be other establishments, which again, would have to be vetted through an individual application and receive city council approval to, to demonstrate that they satisfy the criteria of the code that has been established.
Any other questions?
I have a question, just a simple comment. You know, in the neighborhood that we live in, and in, in the city that we live in, the majority of pets that we see, and I understand, Matthew, your concern, but the majority of the pets that we see frequenting some of the public areas, the restaurants, et cetera, tend to be smaller in nature, I would guess that the majority of pets that would be boarded in such, I would not board my dog, because she's big and she doesn't like other dogs. So, you know, there would be, there would be, I'm sure the, the business owner would want to make sure that the animals that were coming to their facility would be comfortable in their setting, and obviously, we would have to discuss that when the application comes in, so, I'm, I'm not opposed to putting this in the ordinance.
You should bring your dog, they socialize them.
She doesn't like to socialize.
Quick question. We, I know we have a 7,500-square-foot limit, is there a, an, a quantity of animal limit?
The Palm Beach County ordinance for animals has a size limitation, or a, a size that you need to provide per animal, so, your quantity would be-
Based on the size.
Based on size. So if 7,500 square feet, if they required 500 square feet per animal, then you'd be looking at seven and a half animals.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Am I correct in that this is supposed to be for a self-contained area within the PGA corridor, the CG1, that there is no outside worry about the poop and all of that?
You are correct. Totally self-contained.
It's all inside.
Yeah, totally designed, special plumbing, special connections to the, to the sanitary sewer system, so you're absolutely right. Special odor operations, to deal with odors, to be able to wash things down with artificial turf and sub-drainage, so, it, it's 100% inside, but it'll be very, also very, very specialized. So, you know, you might have your pet, and you want your pet taken to a park somewhere, you know, once a week, or once, every other day, you'd be able to have those type of specialized services, well, you'd obviously would pay more than the normal clientele would pay.
I want to point out, once they get in, they're contained, but on the way in and out, they're obviously not.
Speaking of on the way in and out, there is a restriction of how they come and go, correct?
Right, it, it cannot go into, so, Counselor Lane, if it was into like an office building that had a common lobby, that would not be permitted. It could only be in if there's an access directly to the outside. So, staff has really given this a lot of great consideration, and, and as pointed out today, I mean, we see our pets in the mall, we see our pets on planes, we see our pets, our, our pets in, in restaurants, and I, and I think certainly in Palm Beach Gardens, there's great decorum in dealing with our animals, so, we're confident that this will really meet a great need, like you're trying to plan your trip, and you, you're worried about the dog, like my wife is, now you won't have to worry.
I just want to reiterate, I think if you look at the criteria that was outlined on Page 3 of, of the staff report, and what was included in the PowerPoint, all of the issues regarding noise, compatibility, soundproofing, additional setbacks, restricted access, all of that criteria is in great detail listed, and the applicant will have to demonstrate compliance with the criteria. So, there are no uses that are proposed in a residential zoning district, period, so there will be no residential, residential districts that will allow for this use. It is purely a commercial use, it is only allowed in commercial zoning districts.
And not in professional, correct?
Correct, no professional, just CG1, CG2, and the industrial zoning districts.
Right, and industrial.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions? Okay, then I will close the discussion, and do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept Ordinance 11 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I, I'm opposed.
Motion carries for one. Okay. Onto Ordinance 13.
Ordinance 13, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development by amending subsection 78-46D, adopting new Section 78-58 in order to adopt regulations relating to crime prevention through environmental design, further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-751 by adopting the definition of crime prevention through environmental design, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I'm on. I'd like to open the hearing. Has anything changed since the first reading?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Nothing has changed in second reading, staff is here available with Sergeant Sewell, if you have any questions or any information.
Do we need a-
So moved.
Okay. Okay, so we don't need a presentation, we don't need a staff presentation, correct? And, and I don't have any cards on this, so I don't believe anyone is wishing to speak on this item, so I'll close the hearing. Matthew made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, and a second? May I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, onto Ordinance 14.
Ordinance 14, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 2 Administration at Article 3, Boards and Committees, Division 1, generally by repealing subsection 2-861, and re-adopting same as revised, to amend the procedure for filling board and committee vacancies, by repealing subsection 2-96C, to amend the boards and committees' absence policy, further amending Chapter 2 by repealing Section 2-100, council liaison in its entirety, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 2 Administration shall remain the same as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you, I'd like to open the hearing. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes ma'am. For the record, Patricia Snyder, city clerk. Ordinance 14 is proposing three changes to Chapter 2 of the code. The first is Section 2-86, the procedure for appointment and filling vacancies, qualifications for memberships of boards and committees. The proposed changes in subsection 1 are to remove the automatic advancement of an alternate member to a regular member, serving the unexpired term of the member affected. Instead, it appoints an alternate member to serve in the vacancy only until the semi-annual appointments are made. It also allows for appointments at times other than semi-annual currently stated in the code. The second cha- proposed change is Section 2-96, removal of members and attendance policy. The proposed changes in subsection C are intended to amend the list of excused absences to include an absence which is caused due to the rescheduling of a meeting, or to the scheduling of a special meeting. Currently, if a meeting date is changed and a member has a conflict, the code does not allow for an excused absence. For the boards that only meet quarterly, these unexcused absences could result in the removal of a, of a member, since they would reach the more than 25% absentee requirement, resulting in automatic removal. Currently, the code allows for excused absences for complying with the subpoena in any court, documented hospitalization of oneself, spouse, child, sibling, or parent. The next proposed change is in Section 2-100, city council liaisons. I'll now turn that over to the city attorney.
And as you can see in the, in the ordinance and in the staff report, it's proposed to repeal this section and remove the appointment of council members to serve as liaisons, as it says in the staff report. The current code states that city council may appoint one council member to serve as liaison, but the purpose of the advisory boards is to serve as independent advocates for the citizens through constructive and, a constructive discussion and review, and this has not always been this way, it's gone back and forth in, in the city, but it was a, they looked at, actually even considered changing this back in '04, and doing away with or eliminating the liaisons because of the, the impact and influence on the boards. It has a tendency to impede the board's ability to be autonomous and independent, and waters down their recommendations and their review. The intent behind having the advisory boards that we have here in the city is so that you get more citizen input, and you get input other than just for the, for five sitting council members, and so that it is intended to enrich and strengthen the decision from the council, rather than having a liaison. Typically, what is, what has been occurring, and has, has happened with it, the liaisons, is they get assigned to the board, and then they typically remain the liaison for that board for quite a long time. And then, as a matter of course, when the board appointments come up, because the person is more familiar with the, with that particular board, the council has historically deferred board appointments to the, the council liaison, and so then what happens is, the board ceases to be as representative of the community and as, and as diverse as it's intended to be, and it starts to reflect the opinions and predilections of the particular council member who's the liaison on the board, which again, serves to water down and dilute the, the purpose of having an, an autonomous citizen advisory board, and that's why we are recommending that it be eliminated. As it relates to all the boards except for, it's, it's particularly important as it relates, we, we don't have a, a, a council liaison right now for planning and zoning, for obvious reasons. They sit as the local planning agency, you could sit as the LPA yourselves, but it's always been delegated to the planning and zoning board here. They also have final decision-making authority on variances, and they make recommendations for all of your comp plan amendments and LDRs, as well as they hold quasi-judicial hearings as it relates to all the development- as it relates to all the development applications that come before you. So they review all those first and make their recommendation for approval and nonapproval. And so we don't have a council liaison on there because, again, it kind of defeats the purpose. We always had our budget oversight committee, and you would reestablish, the council would reestablish that annually by resolution. And you may recall that we adopted an ordinance very recently in response to the one cent surtax. We were required to create a surtax review board, if you will, that would oversee and review purchases that are made with that one cent sales tax and ensure that they comport with the limitations and the requirements that were set forth in the referendum. And we recommend that there would not be a council liaison for the budget oversight review board, which is also the board that does the one cent surtax. And again, the reason for that is that in the very, since we incorporated that into the budget oversight committee, the ordinance that enabled, that was put before the voters for referendum and imposed the one cent surtax required an independent citizen oversight board. So again, defeats the purpose to have an independent oversight review board that then is potentially influenced by a single council member. And that's why we recommend the deletion of section 2-100 and reserving it for future legislation.
I have no card, so I don't see anyone wishing to speak on this, so I will close the hearing and bring this back for a discussion amongst the council. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. I have been a member of the budget oversight committee. I don't want anyone to think that this is about the budget committee, staff that's part of the budget committee, the members that have been a part of the budget committee, or the past or future potential council liaisons to that committee. I am going to disagree, and I understand the point. I understand, I've thought about this a lot. I just feel that at this stage of our city's history, we went through a lot of time and talking to a lot of different people in the community, and one of the issues that continued to come up was transparency. And I know that some people would argue that having a council liaison not on a committee would improve the ability for the committee to be independent. I valued having a council liaison on that committee. I valued having, which was former Mayor Premerozo, on that committee. He would answer questions. Most of the time, the questions were directed to the finance department, and they always answered the questions honestly and well. However, sometimes having the elected officials sitting there with the ear to the community, being able to answer some questions, I found important and something that I think would be important to maintain for the future of the city, to make sure that the residents know that one of their elected officials, people that they can talk to, they can be held accountable for, can give them some information that is independent. So for that reason, that's my one concern. I don't have a problem with section 2-86 and 2-96, but 2-100 is what is concerning to me. So this is a first reading. I will continue to think about it, but at this stage, I think it's important that we maintain a council liaison.
Do I have any other discussion?
Sure. Mark, I agree with you. And in point of fact, when I had my discussions, you were the paradigm that I used. It made me feel very comfortable to have you as a liaison and to have you as a liaison now to the budget committee. I know that when I served as a member of Park and Rec, I enjoyed serving with Maria, and I think that she did an excellent job as a liaison, and I found it comforting to have her there. I think that it gives us reach. You can handle budget. I could look at, continue to work on Rec. It makes me feel very comfortable that one of us is out there, just as in a corporation, you would have someone handling finance, you'd have somebody handling marketing, you'd have someone handling personnel. It makes us stronger, and each of us can bring back things to the council. So I think that it would be better if we continued to serve as liaisons. My wife told me it just gives me four more committee meetings a year, but they just shut up. But I really think that it would be a contribution.
Ms. Lee?
I'm going to take the opposite side on this one. I think that unlike a corporation where everyone is getting paid by the same entity and you're all working for the corporation, that the boards were designed to be another set of eyes and ears, another way to look at things and bring a different perspective in. And having one person from the council on the board gives that council member information that the other council members, and a different perspective on that information than when the board would come to present as an individual entity to us together. And I think in order for true transparency, if the board members are selected appropriately, which we get to do, and the people that are chosen are chosen, people that can be trusted to work in the best interests of the city, that they should have the autonomy to be able to do their work, bring it to us for review, and we ultimately have the final say. So.
Mr. Woods?
I agree with 2-86, 2-96, as well as 2-100. We're going into a new phase of Palm Beach Gardens with this penny sales tax that I think we need a degree of separation from the budget review committee, which apparently is going to be the oversight committee as well for the penny sales tax. And we do have a staff liaison to the council where if anything can be, that needs to be brought up, or there's a presentation that needs to be brought to council, it can be done that way. But I think the council should be, have a layer of separation from its boards so it doesn't show anything that could possibly be inappropriate, especially with this leap of growing we're going to be doing in the next five years. I would personally like to set back and, on this particular issue, do the council, and when it gets to us, make those choices. I agree with Rochelle as far as we appoint and we trust, and we have conversations with people we want to appoint on these boards. We trust our staff. We brag about our staff. And I still want to consider to trust our staff, and I like the separation from, between us as the final say, actually the beginning say and the final say of what's going on with these boards. So I'm going to agree with staff recommendation on this as well.
And to put in my two cents, I actually, with the advent of the IG and the need for transparency, I believe an independent committee is necessary for our city. And what I would like to see, though, is whereas we, the council, used to go and sit in on the meetings, I would like to see presentations from the actual committees to us. That's why we are actually getting more interaction with the citizens instead of us going to always do them. When I was in Jupiter this week, it was, one of the council members had applauded the fact that the audit committee was totally independent of the city, and they were able to do their work in an independent, autonomous way. And I think that's important for us. And like I said, with the advent of the IG and everyone's need for transparency, I believe us stepping back from this would be a good idea. So is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I think it's great that we're having discussions up here and that we're dealing with the issues and we're wrestling with them. And I think it's, in the law, we call it a hot bench where you're getting a lot of questions from the bench. So I think it's great. I think we figured out where we're going on this, so let's go to the votes.
Well, I just want to make one last comment to let you think about this before we come up to second reading, and yes, the conversation is always good. Over the past five years of being on the budget committee and again with Mayor Premerozo on that committee, you would hear him make certain comments on the dais when they were discussing the budget. And this is probably more about the budget than, I don't know much about Parks and Rec, you know, workings there, but he would make certain comments on the dais when there was discussions amongst the council members about the budget and about some of the concerns. And some of those questions came from him sitting there, listening to the budget committee of residents in their discussions and questions to staff. And I thought that was valuable, not only for that particular member, but for the others on the council so that they could hear some of the direct questions that were asked between staff and the committee. So, you know, I just want you to think about how that impacts the discussion about the workings of that committee when the council sits back up here and actually hears the recommendations from the committee. So I'm going to leave it at that. And thank you.
And once again, I know that when Maria was our liaison to Parks and Rec, she certainly didn't influence us. She was here as a presence, someone just to learn and be able to come back and provide insight and knowledge to the council. And also, it was good for us as we served on. It showed a seriousness, a purpose. It showed that the council actually cared enough to actually be there. So I think it's good, but let's do a vote.
Actually, I do can, I do understand where they're coming from, but we're not talking about Parks and Recs. And is there a possible way we can add a layer of transparency from the budget review committee or Parks and Recs to the council? So, because we are talking about millions upon millions of dollars, especially with the penny sales tax. So I would like to separate myself from that, but at the same time, I'd also like to add a level of transparency from their committee to us collectively.
Well, that's where I would like to see, I would like to see that whoever is chairing the committee come into a presentation with us.
Maybe we can add some.
And have our staff with them. So now the give and take has gone on between the staff and with the committee members of the boards and councils, and then they will come back and speak with us. And as Mark said, whether the question is at the budget oversight committee meeting or whether the question is here, it's still getting asked. So I would like to see, I would like to see more interaction with the residents, with us at council meetings than us going to meetings that no one attends.
I agree with you on that. I was going to say that I agree with you on that one.
Well, don't forget, though, that there's two purposes to those committee meetings. One is open to the public, which, yes, nobody ever attended. But two was to have some information shared amongst the staff, the residents, and the elected, so you have three sets of years coming from three separate places. So I understand everybody's point of view, but this is my point of view, and I think it's going to stay that way. But that's okay. I will live in a democracy.
All right. I would like to end the discussion, and may we have a motion to pass on first reading?
Madam Mayor, I'll move to move forward on section 2-86, or ordinance 14.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
May I ask a quick question, though, Max? In this, as far as voting nay on ordinance 14, 2017, we're voting no on all three of the proposals, correct?
Yes, you, yes. The ordinance is a whole, yes, sir.
Motion passes three to two. Next on our list is Resolution 31, the Alton PCD. May I have the clerk read the title, please? And this is a quasi-judicial hearing also.
Resolution 31, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the site plans for the 316 single-family dwelling units and 199 townhome units in the 94.50 acre neighborhood district, Parcels D, E, and F within the 681 acre Alton Plan Community Development PCD, generally located south of Grandiflora Road, north of Hood Road, east of Interstate 95, and west of Central Boulevard. As more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I'd like to open the hearing and declare any expertises on this particular item. Rochelle? Matthew?
Go ahead.
Mark?
Nope.
Carl?
Negative.
Maria? No. And I hope you all don't mind that I'm using your first name. I could be calling you council members, but is it okay if I use your first names?
That works for me.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You, okay. I'm just kidding. I don't really care less. May I have the petitioner presentation, please?
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. For the record, Donaldson Hearing with Kotler in hearing here tonight on behalf of KH Alton LLC. I have Mr. Scott Morton here with Coulter and KH Alton. Mr. Sapo sends his regards, not able to make it this evening. And we also have Miss Susan O'Rourke here with us, who is a part of our development team. So we're here to talk about what we would refer to as really the remaining residential lands within the Alton PCD. So the Alton PCD is on the screen, about 680 acres in total size. The area in orange is kind of the commercial area of the PCD. You're all familiar with United Technologies as it's continuing to come out of the ground. Of course, Clarity Point is an assisted living facility that's under construction. The town center, the apartments, and Neighborhood 1. And several months ago, or earlier this year, what we refer to as Parcel G, which is located west of 95 and east of the Turnpike, was approved by the council. So the area that we're referring to is the area that's really located about 94 acres south of what we refer to as Grandiflora, south of that area that's built today, which is Neighborhood 1. So just for a little bit of background, and I'm not going to go through all of the amendments that have occurred over time, but the base approval for the Alton PCD included 2.6 million square feet of biotech research and development, 1.2 million square feet of office, 300 hotel rooms, 500,000 square feet of retail, and 2,700 dwelling units. So we're tonight, we're talking about the residential homes that are being proposed, and I'm pleased to tell you that ultimately, we're going to be about 1,000 units less than what was approved by the original 2,700 units. So this is what we refer to as the PCD Master Plan. And the PCD Master Plan basically identifies the locations of all of the roads, the lakes, the preserve areas, the development parcels, wetland areas, parks, and those types of elements. But in addition to that, it also then takes that allocation that was assigned by way of the development of regional impact in the PCD and assigns that to each of the parcels. So tonight, we're talking about specific parcels that have specific acreages, that have specific numbers of dwelling units that are assigned to each of them. And specifically, we're going to talk about Parcel D, Parcel E, and Parcel F. And so the lakes, the wetlands, the preserves, the buffers are established, as well as all the points of ingress and egress off of the major roadway corridors. So if you want to refer back to this, we certainly can at any time in the future. So tonight, we're really just looking at neighborhoods D, E, and F, which will include a total of 316 single-family homes and 199 townhomes. So generally, townhomes are considered a fee simple housing product, as opposed to when we refer to as multifamily. We're talking really generally about the apartments that are generally in a stacked or non-fee simple type of an environment. So in terms of what is proposed in Parcel D, we're looking for at a total of 117 single-family homes. We'll talk a little bit more about the detail. There's 126 units approved on the master plan, so we're far less than what was allocated by way of the master plan. Parcel E, 199 single-family homes, and this is a significant reduction. It was actually 674 units are actually approved for that parcel. So we're doing really less than a third of what was allocated by way of the PCD. And in Parcel F, we're proposing 199 townhomes, and 255 homes were approved. So all in all, on these three parcels, 515 dwelling units and 915 dwelling units were actually approved by way of the PCD Master Plan. And in total, we're going to be about 1,000 units, plus or minus below that 2,700 units approved by way of the DRI. So I'll skip through this slide fairly quickly, but also, as it relates to the DRI and the development order and the conditions of approval, the resolution also stipulates minimums requirements for what I would say is open space inside those parcels. There's lots of open space throughout the entire common areas in terms of lakes and parkways and preserves, but it also stipulates a minimum amount of open space. And I'm pleased to tell you that we are substantially over, probably 50% over, what is required by the requirements of the DRI. Now, I've taken Alton and I've kind of switched it to give you a little different perspective. North is now to the left, so Abacoa is to the north. North is now to the left, so Abacoa is to the, is to the north. Hood Road is to the south. And the road that I've just highlighted is Alton Road. Alton Road, as you know, is now built down to Grandiflora, which is about this location. Grandiflora comes right on in, and that's right on the, what we refer to as the south side of Neighborhood 1. So Neighborhood 1 was the first community that was, that was approved that's now under construction. And we're pleased to tell you that the homes and townhomes are selling very, very well within that community. So there's Grandiflora. Everything that we're doing is south of Grandiflora Boulevard. But there is, one of the elements that I'll highlight is our recreation facility that was previously approved last year in 2016. It's a wonderful facility. It's currently under construction today. It kind of forms what we refer to in planning terms. It's at the end of, of Grandiflora, so it forms what we refer to as a terminated vista. It's the focal point for the end of that road. And the area that we're referring to is Parcel D, E, and F, which is in the south half of the site plan. San Michelle forms the eastern boundary of our site, and as a part of the original Development Order and DRI, there's very specific buffers and separations that were approved that are required to be implemented. There's also a power line corridor that runs along that area. So not to confuse you, but now we're oriented north-south again. And I'll walk you through each of these neighborhoods. Again, Grandiflora terminating at the recreation facility. Alton Road, which will be constructed, continued to be constructed, south of Grandiflora, connecting to Hood Road. Parcel D, Parcel E, Parcel F. And on the very south end of Parcel F, there's actually a park that was approved as a part of the last PCD amendment, which we're all very, very proud of, Recreation Center. The Meyer and JCC really now becomes very integral to this community. And one of the things that has occurred in working with your staff over the years is trying to figure out a way to solve that very, very awkward entrance and exit in and out of the Meyer. So we're pleased to tell you that we'll, as a part of this proposal, we're actually also creating a new roadway, which will connect the Meyer to the, to Alton Road, which would enable the kids and parents to be able to access a signalized intersection. That signalizing intersection will be completed as a part of this project. So we're very proud of that. The, the access road or growth point road that currently provides access to the Meyer and the JCC, it will remain open for certain turning movements, but those left turning movements out that are so dangerous will now be funneled through and will be able to run down another internal road that will provide access to Alton Road. So really helps this whole piece kind of come together as one giant PCD with a variety and a mixture of uses that all harmonize very much so well to, together. So this is the rec center, just kind of giving you some previews. I won't dwell on it, but a very, very special facility, more contemporary in design. It's already approved, just highlighting because it's very, very special and will serve the entire eastern part of this community with a variety of not only indoor activities, but really a world-class pool area, pool environment, resort-type of environment with lap, fitness, pickleball, tennis, basketball, and other hard courts. So very excited about that. That's under construction right now. One of the other things that's an integral component of the Alton PCD is walkability. And so there's a lot of emphasis placed on parkways and walkways and pathways, not only internal to the community, but also leading all the way up to the wonderful Town Center that's under construction and interconnecting not only the residential and the non-residential, but even the schools and the, and the JCC, all these elements together. So within our neighborhoods, we have very specific requirements for having park areas within what we refer to as, is about a five-minute walk, which is about 1,320 feet, as well as other smaller parks that are all within distances of about a block's distance, about 750 feet, and then many, many pocket parks throughout the community. So I'll emphasize these as we go through each of the parcels. So starting with Parcel D. Parcel D, of course, immediately to the, to the north of Parcel D is neighborhood number one. And so we're presenting to you a form of development that we refer to as traditional neighborhood development or more of a new urbanist standard. It was what the DRI was originally approved for. So in this particular case, things are a little bit different. And I'll talk, I'll talk to you about a few of those technique, techniques. But basically, homes are oriented to the street, kind of in the old-fashioned, they're oriented to the street, eyes on the street. We did some SEPTED approvals earlier today. This is very much so in line of SEPTED-type principles, where you're having an organization to the street. We have like housing, generally facing like housing. So on the north side, we have very similar housing on the north side of the street. But then, in addition to that, we have a lot of very, very special parks that we'll show you that basically provide for the residents. And then even with the lake areas, a little bit different than what you would traditionally see in a lot of our communities. So often, the, the lakes or our open spaces are basically walled by houses, so you can't see them. In the world of traditional neighborhood design, we try to make those more public. So we have roads that are adjacent to the streets, so everybody who drives by gets to be able to, to enjoy that amenity. And then the homes that live on the roads overlook the road and overlook the street. We have on-street parking that make it a little bit different. We spend a lot of time talking about our parks and how they function, and I'll show you some pictures of those. We have ingress and egress points that are, that are more frequent than what you would typically have in your, in your more gated-type communities. We actually have sidewalks and interconnected pathways that will connect to a larger pathway system. So along all the roads, all along Alton Road, from, from Donald Ross extending down to Hood Road, there's these beautiful parkways and pathways and landscaping, so we connect to that. There's also continuous bike paths that provide access to all the amenities throughout the, the, the PCD, as well as the non-residential uses. So just kind of zooming in on, on some of these, these amenities, a lot of hardscape, there's seating areas, walkway areas, there's special seating areas that are on focal points as you drive into the community. A lot of attention paid to the streetscape and the trees. Street trees are an integral component, so we have shade to promote walkability, areas for, for parents to go out and take their kids to a totlot, or just basically to sit in an open space. And again, often, these spaces are basically fronted on to where we have homes that front on to them that provide, again, another additional level of safety dealing with the area of SEPTED and other activities that we, that we propose. Some of the amenities include mail kiosks. So this is a mail kiosk that was constructed in neighborhood one. We have similar mail kiosks of different styles, because we have three different styles of architecture. So we have a Mediterranean transitional mail kiosk and an island mail kiosk. And again, we often will integrate a play structure adjacent to that, so mom or dad, you know, they can make going to the mail really an event. They go to the mail, child gets to go out and play, perhaps they meet and talk and socialize with their neighbors at the same time. So these are some of the renderings of the homes that are going to be built. And I'm showing you this to show you, A, we have three different styles of architecture. We have an island style, a contemporary style, and a transitional Mediterranean style. But when we have homes that front on roadways, we do something in traditional neighborhood design is that we often have what we refer to as a street edge. And what that does is it defines the very, very public space that we have out on the, out on the street, which is very, very public, and it basically creates some semi-private space, which would basically be with inside that street edge, and then even some more private space as you get up to a porch, and then certainly the private space inside of a home. So you'll see that this is a treatment that will occur all along our major roadways, all along Alton Road, all along Grandiflora, as well as along Beckman Terrace, which is the interconnect to the JCC. So again, just some, another view, very nice homes. And when I show you some pictures of the actual homes built, you'll see that they're very, very similar to that streetscape. This is Parcel, Parcel E, 199 homes, two points of ingress and egress that align with the roads that are on in Parcel D across the street. Very, very nicely done. The majority of the homes are what we refer to as alley homes, so they're accessed from an alley, but front on to a street. Sometimes we have them front on to a green, and those become some of the most desirable homes that we have within the community. On our edges, in this case, along the edge, we have homes that we refer to as edge homes, and they actually would access their garages in a more traditional way through the front. And then they focus on to, in this particular case, lakes or other amenities. Again, always a lot of attention to the public green spaces, so that we can get people outsized using these spaces. Lot of emphasis on pedestrian movement and trying to activate any of the green spaces that we have to make them usable, not only for adults, but for, for, for kids. And again, this is very, 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 very interesting. What we refer to as almost as a muse. So this is coming in the main entrance, and it's a technique that we use in urban planning. Instead of running a road all the way through, we eliminate the road and we create a beautiful green space that becomes very, very special and very much so enjoyed by the public. And again, our Recreation Center. Parcel F, Parcel F is intended to be townhomes, fee simple townhomes. That's what's identified on the Master Plan. We're less than what was approved, so we have townhomes. These are very similar, but different than the townhomes that we've built in Neighborhood 1. This is what we refer to as our Magnolia Unit. The ones in Neighborhood 1 are very, very large, 3,000, 3,500 square feet and larger. These are still very large, but they slightly provide an alternative. We have two different styles of architecture in the townhomes. I think we have nine, 11 different townhome configurations, a lot of diversity, a lot of walkways, a lot of pedestrian areas. And again, access points that are predefined on the Master Plan, and a lot of attention to the public spaces, a large park space, where homes front on to the space, almost like if you were in New York, you're fronting on Central Park. These are smaller pocket parks, but they're fronting on a, on a, on a great green. It makes it very, very special. And the architecture itself helps define some of that space, so that when you're in it, we're using architecture to help create a feeling of space. So it's something that we, that we do. Lot of interconnectivity, pedestrian ways to get everybody to be able to circulate in a variety of different ways throughout the neighborhood and to get to the wonderful pathways and greenways and lake walks that we have throughout the community. And just kind of zooming in on, on maybe this one large space that's within our townhome area, and again, all of our townhomes have outdoor patios and are very, very special oversized garages. But we have lakeside seating, we have pedestrian linkages along the edges of the lake, we have our mail kiosk where people will come to to create, again, additional social interaction. So we designed it to encourage that playground space, open play areas. And generally, these open play areas, we do with specialty grass, so they'll be done with a zoysia or a Bermuda, making them very, much, much more special. And then group seating areas in it, and done in a different way. It's not just your traditional bench. So this could be, children can play on it, you know, that millennials could sit down and open their laptops, so it could be used in many, many different ways. It's very, very sculptural, even in the, in the way that it's presented in the landscape. So it becomes a very much so an architectural statement. So here's some of the views of what a space like that would look like. And so playground area, mail kiosk, you see that people are already congregating. This guy's meeting his next, his next girlfriend. And then, and then areas, kind of lighten it up a little bit, areas of shade and pavilion areas. So just a lot of, a lot of, a lot of attention paid to the landscape, how we deal with intersections, really to create some specialty. So if you've studied our plans, you'll really understand that there was a lot of careful thought given to how everything's delineated. This is the streetscape. And again, this is Beckman Terrace. So Beckman Terrace connects Alton Road to, to the JCC. And again, this, in this area, because it's a more important road, it's got a street edge on it to help further define the space. And just to the south of this, one day, there'll be a beautiful city park, which I know you're all very, very excited about. But just to kind of give you an idea of looking down the street, a lot of attention to pay to what are you going to look like? So we really want to create something special. We want you to look at architecture, special landscaping, open space. So at the end of every view, there's a thought that was given there in how not only the buildings are oriented and articulated, but what those activities are. Even our alleyways are very, very beautiful. Architecture, a lot of diversity. And I'll start to speed up here for you, but we have nine different floor plans ranging from 2,100 square feet to about 5,100 square feet. So a lot of varieties, a lot of townhome configurations, multiple variations in our architecture, three styles. We've got end units, multiple color opera, options, multiple casita operations, options, porch options, and that basically results in very significant diversity, which is something that Coulter, I know, is extremely proud of. So some of the homes, just going to walk you through, this is, this is one of our, what we refer to as our alley-loaded homes. So you're seeing a porch on the front. This is the contemporary style. And the contemporary style, believe it or not, has been very well accepted. And I'm pleased to tell you, we have won probably 90% of every housing award that's out there this year for, in every different class, for the, the uniqueness of our architecture, the quality of the designs. I mean, there's rows and rows and rows of trophies that have been won for, throughout South Florida. So this has been very well recognized. We spent a lot of attention on, on how the end condition is viewed. So the landscaping on the ends are very, very nice. The streetscape is spectacular. Again, this is a two-story contemporary with a special porch option, very, very nicely done. Again, we also pay attention to the ends of every single unit. This is our island style, so this is not your Key West style, but more transitional in architecture. And again, a lot of attention paid to how it looks like on every side of the home. This is a Mediterranean style. Again, alley-loaded, all the homes that are alley-loaded have porches. And you see a lot of great attention to how we place every tree. It's very intentional in the design of not only the homes, but the landscaping for, for each home and how they look and how they live. This is a representation of what we would refer to as our front-loaded homes, or those street-edge homes, where you'd have more of a traditional driveway that's accessed from the front as opposed to an alley, combination of side-loaded garages, side-loaded and front-loaded garages, as well as front-loaded garage. A lot of time spent to de-emphasize the garage. We don't want, the streetscape is paramount in everything that we're doing. So a lot of attention to detail, streetscapes, the ends, so something that we're very, very proud of. And I'll show you a few pictures of some of the existing completed product that we, that we have to kind of give you a perspective of what that begins to look like in just a minute. We do have a few waivers, and as you're aware, that waivers are something that enable us to address individual unique issues within a development. It creates and inspires additional creativity and enables the applicant to utilize that creativity and express it. So we have seven waivers that are a part of this request. These are very similar waivers that were granted in the, in the previous plan, but I'll review those with you quickly. One is dealing with our streetscape, and this is a waiver to what we refer to as from the design guidelines, not from your land development regulations. But the design guidelines require street trees every 30 feet, and instead of doing, that's actually too close. I'm a landscape architect. You've driven through so many places where the trees are just overgrown. So what we did is put trees 40 feet on center, but we made them larger, so the actual caliber of trees going in is greater. We have cases on the street, traditionally, your code dealing with regular parking spaces says I have to have a landscape island every nine spaces. In this particular case, we have parallel parking, and for engineering reasons, there's a few cases where we needed to have 10 spaces in a row, because we're dealing with catch basins, how we drain streets with on-street parking is much different than we do in a traditional subdivision. And that enables us to do that. We've, we have a provision which now allows us to have our porches encroach into the front yard setback. And again, that's very consistent with the whole concept of traditional neighborhood design. If you were to open up a book printed by, or written by Andres Duani or others that specialize in this, that's what they would tell you. And I won't run through all of these, but your staff is supporting all of these waiver requests. And if you have any specific question, I'll be certainly more than happy to come back. So these are some real pictures. So I showed you some of those renderings. Now, those renderings were produced a long time ago, but you could see that the architecture is very is very much so consistent with the representations that we're able to make you. And these are street trees that are put in day one, these are about 16 to 18 feet, they're about five to six inches in caliber, and so you can see the spacing of these really are quite appropriate, because also even in addition to the street trees, the lighting is very important. So if we had trees that are 30 feet on center, they're going to overtake the lighting, and so this really helps us deal with that. But you can see very, very nice architecture, one story, two stories, get some diversity, and you begin to see how the three styles begin to play together, very, very nice and been very, very well accepted. These are some of those open spaces, and all the open spaces are articulated with pavers, in this case, specialty grass. People come out, they love it, you can see how happy everybody in the picture is, right? And then some, some other views of some of, some of our homes down the street, and this is some views of the front-loaded homes, again, just very, very nice, lot of emphasis on outdoor space oriented toward the front street. Our townhomes, again, lots of, of outdoor space, again, the street edge treatment, so very, very nice. And then, of course, we want to emphasize that remember that this is part of a bigger picture. So the one thing that's unique about the, the Alton development is it is mixed-use. So we've got a lot of services that are provided, and those services will, will meet the needs of our residents. This is, this is the town center that's already been approved, but if you drive down the town cen, the road, once this is built, there's sidewalks and great plazas on either side making that walking experience very, very nice, all the way through the multifamily, and then there's a wonderful bridge with pedestrian seating areas that lead you into the neighborhoods. So the whole idea is to create a walkable, a bikeable community that basically reduces that typical need on the automobile. And when we create great space, great outdoor space, it tends to encourage people, hey, why don't I go out? This is a great walk, why do I take the car? We have seating areas and resting areas along the roadway, you can see these, the hardscape in all the sidewalks, very, treated very, very nicely, well-lit continuously at night, so a project that all of us, and I know the city is extremely excited about, again, very special placemaking in order to get residents out, and of course, the town center will meet the needs of all the residents. I know all of us are excited about all of the uses that are there. So I know my presentation was a little bit long, but I know if you guys have not all, sorry, Mr. Manager, but I know a lot of you hadn't seen all of everything before, so I spent a couple extra minutes to give you some overview, but our entire team is here. We want to thank staff. Please understand that this went through a review process that was probably at least a year long, so a lot of detail, a lot of time where we collaborate really to make things the absolute best they can be. Very proud to be a part of our team. Mr. Morton here is also here to answer any questions that you may have, so thank you[795.41]
Bring it back for discussion. Anyone on the council have any comments, questions?
I just think that the, um, the architecture, the layout is nice. It separates Palm Beach Gardens. It makes it kind of special and that's what I appreciate, the plan. And also that the residential is concentrated on the one side. So I'm, I'm happy with what you've done.
Anyone else?
I have a question about the alley loaded homes. Are there, the front entrances are on the green spaces. If there's an alley, does that mean everyone has to come in through the back? Or is there pathways that?
Well, well, our, our alleyways are fairly well glorified alleys. They're, they're very, very nice. They're as nice as the street in the front. Uh, so they, every home will have a garage and access from the back. Uh, the public access, or at least the presence of public access is to the street or to the green space. Uh, and they, they function very, very well. They answer your question.
If you had guests coming, I guess, are they coming in the back?
Well, you know, well typically if you have on-street parking, your guests would park on, on the street and they would walk in. So, uh, you know, maybe I'll try to zoom in here.
But if it's on a park, they can't?
Let me just zoom in and kind of give you a, give you a very, very specific, uh, uh. Is the keyboard not working? Yeah, that's okay. Nevermind, it's not going to the number. Oh yeah, I'll just go up to sixteen. Right, i- i- so this, this, uh, Scott wanted me to go ahead and show you this. This is a very good example right here. So you, your guests do have the opportunity to park in your, in your driveway. So, uh, we have oversized garages, uh, which we worked out with, with staff. Full length of a, a car can sit in the back, uh, uh, in, in the garage. You could have, uh, or in the, in the driveway. But in addition to that, we have all this parking that's on-street and it's all connected with sidewalks. And so they would simply just walk down a path and go over to their, to the, to the guests that they were meeting. So we have a significant amount of parking that's, that's on-street that, that provides that access to, uh, individual homes. So, uh, this has been, uh, used very, very effectively, uh, not only within neighborhood one as it exists today, uh, but if, even if you, uh, go into some of the sections in Abacoa where we've done that. These will be the first homes to sell because they're on this great open spaces. Yeah, and the on-street parking is in addition to the minimum code.
Good. Carl, any questions? Okay, um.
Sorry, one last question unrelated to the, the residential. Uh, the, the park, how big is that park and what is it? Do we know what, uh, do you know what is going to be on that park?
The, the city park?
Yes.
You know, I, I, the, uh, cities will be bringing something forward. Maybe the city manager might be able to answer you, but it's about, about nine, 10 acres in size.
Uh, we're finishing up our discussions, uh, with the applicant on that park and we're probably, uh, probably a week away from having finished the total acreages. Um, the park itself is eight point four acres and then the property we have surrounding it to allow us to get the right of way for the road. So it's close to 10 acres. They had a require, oh, I'm taking up your job here. They had a requirement to put two separate parks on each side of, uh, the, uh, the development for five acres. And we're negotiating, putting a 10-acre park together, uh, frontage on Hood Road. And we should be finished with that hopefully and sign the agreement maybe next week, which time we'll have a finished product to show you. We're still under discussions.
Thank you. One question, quick question. Your townhomes, do they have elevators?
No.
Okay. And not a question, but an observation. Thank you for paying attention to the thoroughfares and being able to take traffic through the community in a nice, safe way. That's important because traffic is such a big, a big issue here.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we accept the resolution?
Madam Mayor, I'll motion and move on Resolution 31, 2017.
All those in favor? Oh gosh. Second please.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay. Onto Resolution 33.
Resolution 33, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the appointment of a regular member to the City of Palm Beach Gardens Police Officers Pension Board, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Uh, tonight, we will be making an appointment to the Police Officers Pension Fund Board. Due to the resignation of Mr. Christopher McDermott, there is one vacant resident position to be filled. One application has been received and was part of your staff report. The applicant is Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, and I recommend Alan for appointee, to be appointed to the Police Officers Pension Fund Board. Can I get a motion?
Certainly, and I, I can't think of someone who'd be more qual, more well-qualified. And you do have a, a motion here.
I'd like to second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, nothing. Okay. Now, uh, bro, uh, Resolution 34.
Resolution 34, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, reaffirming the appointment of the regular members of the Budget Oversight Committee as regular members of the Budget Oversight Review Board and approving the appointment of two regular members to the Budget Oversight Review Board, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Tonight we'll be making appointments to the Budget Oversight Review Board. The three members that previously served on the Budget Oversight Committee will be reappointed to the board and we will be appointing two new regular members. The applications were part of your package and I know that you heard the staff report. Have you all had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take them. Uh, discussion and recommendations at this time.
I'll start. Um, I'd like to recommend Andrew Commodore as a member of the Budget Oversight Review Board. Uh, Andrew is a young family man here in Palm Beach Gardens. He's a CPA and a tax attorney, has served on other boards, uh, in the city's president-elect of the Palm Beach County Estate Planning Council. He's a member of the Executive Committee and Board of Directors for the Jewish Federation and he's on the Board of Trustees for the Arthur I. Meyer Jewish Academy, looking at the other members that will be staying on the board and what their makeup is. I think that the addition of Andrew would be, uh, a great addition to the board.
And do we have any other recommendations?
Sure, I'll go next.
Okay.
I'd like to recommend, uh, Bill Champlin. He's got an MBA as well as a law degree. He's been actively involved in business and the law for over 40 years. He's president of Ball and Isles. Um, and if you look at the, uh, populate, the landmass of Juno Beach, uh, Ball and Isles has approximately the same landmass. If you look at the budget of Juno Beach, uh, they are comparable. So it's a $7.5 million budget. There's 19 police officers in Juno and 40 in, uh, Ball and Isles. And, uh, they have, uh, $7 million in reserves and he's actively involved as president in handling all of that finance and, uh, keeping the community running so well.
I like all your words for Bill, but I, I believe Bill withdrew from consideration, didn't he?
Uh, Mayor, as far as I know, he did. Uh, I think he's, I think he's, uh, has interest in the Charter Review Committee is from what I have understand with my discussions with him.
Yes. But I liked the sales pitch. That's why I wanted to hear it. But I believe, uh, there were, Bill, Bill Champlin and George Wicker had both, um, put an application in. George Wicker withdrew his application because he, he understands the importance of being on Parks and Rec. So he's staying there and Bill, uh, as Carl said, and, and Bill had the same discussion with me, he was actually, when, when and if we have a Charter Review Committee, because of his experience doing charters in Connecticut, he would like to be on that committee.
Mayor, um, I'm sorry. I'd like to motion that Dave Middleton be ap, appointed to the, um, Budget Review Committee. Has a very large business. He sits on the PGA Corridor Association. Um, I think he would be a good mix with a tax attorney and, and blend well with the other individuals that are already on it. I don't, I, I wouldn't want to be too heavy on, with too many types of professions. And I believe David, with his, um, experience in large business, would give some insight, um, and balance out the committee so they could collectively do their jobs. That's my thought. And obviously, I am in support of Andrew Commodore. I've talked to him several times and he's sharp. I like that guy. I think he'd be, I think he'd be excellent. What, what's so funny about that?
No, we like that.
You like that? Okay, there you go.
Okay. Mark?
Um, I, I'm happy to support Andrew, Andrew as well. We did have a coffee and, and talked to him a little bit and heard a lot of good things about him. Um, we did have, uh, we have a couple bankers, a couple CPAs. I like the idea of having a business person on the committee. I was a small business person, not a big business person, but I thought that had some value to the, to the budget committee as well. So, um, I'm happy to also be engaged with, um, with David.
So it looks like we have David, David Middleton and Andrew Commodore. And Max, do I need to do them separately or together?
You do it all at once, Madam Mayor. And so just, just to be clear, um, what we'd be doing is, uh, if you would like, I'll say it and somebody can say I make that motion.
That'd be great.
You, you'd be moving to approve Resolution 34, 2017 with the, uh, the names of the, of Mark Feldmesser, Dennis Barron and Mark Schulte and with the addition of Andrew Commodore and David Middleton, uh, being appointed to the board.
Okay, so.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll move to, move forward on Resolution 34, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Unfortunately, we don't have the, uh, four marks in a Dennis anymore.
All right, we are moving right along and what everyone, I think, has been waiting for? North County District Park, Resolution 38.
Resolution 38, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the Palm Beach County's North District Park Conceptual Master Plan, 2017, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County, authorizing the expenditure of funds from the One-Cent Sales Surtax Capital Improvement Fund pursuant to Section 2-Dash-293 appropriations of the City Code of Ordinances necessary to fund the construction of the North County District Park, authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to effectuate said project, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Hi.
Hello.
How are you? It was, it was the Daniel and Maria Dog and Pony Show the last week, so this is great.
Uh, Daniel Prieto, Sports Director, for the record, Madam Mayor and, uh, Council. Thank you. And May the 4th, I'm sorry, that's been used already. It's my honor to present to you, uh, Resolution 38, 2017. Uh, a lot of, a lot of great deal of work, uh, from a lot of people, former council and mayor, current council and mayor, and, uh, has been put towards this, uh, project and a lot of cooperation in the North County, all in the name of youth sports and development. So that's even better. Before I get into the details of the resolution, I'd like to explain the various challenges to our project, uh, to the facilities that we have currently. On our municipal complex, we have a new stage that's, uh, hosting events like Dancing Under the Stars and, and what could be tomorrow's, uh, Movies on the Plaza. We have a Green Market Pavilion that supports our green market where almost any, uh, given weekend, we'll have two to 5,000, uh, customers attending the green market. Further, we have a baseball complex with eight fields that supports a youth por, uh, program that, uh, has roughly 450, uh, baseball players in it. And that's been maxed out. We also have a soccer complex that's just over seven acres that has, uh, that supports a youth program that has roughly 1,200 soccer players and 500 travel, uh, soccer participants. And, uh, what that does is just creates a lot of, uh, different sorts of uses. And if you ask any of our, our youth players and coaches, you know, on a Sunday, you, you can't get access to the fields until 2:00 PM because the green market's going on. We have already thousands of people taking up parking spaces, so we don't get that double sort of use. If there's a soccer tournament going on, baseball cannot have the tournament. A lot of compromise, um, and not enough room for growth. So also what that does is provide, um, expansions into different sorts of facilities. So you could have a soccer program that utilizes our, our Gardens Park Soccer Complex, but also Lilac Park and PGA National Park. And as a parent, that creates logistical issues, driving one kid to, uh, one field while an older child may have to go to another field. It's just not, uh, not as, uh, ideal. The next two slides will, uh, show who and what we do as a, as a rec department and as Palm Beach Gardens Youth Athletic Association, our, our partnered youth, uh, organization. Uh, you know, as a rec department, we, we service on a, on a day, on any given year, about 9,890 participants, 64% of which are resident and 35% of which are non-resident. And on the, mm, youth athletic side, we have roughly 4,762 participants, 59% of which are resident, 41% are non-resident, in which case they are coming from all over the North End and really other counties included. Uh, but, uh, it's because of, uh, of that, before I move on actually, I'd like to just explain this slide as well. Um, this is the households and, and the dot map that was, that was ga, information gathered that's been, uh, put together that presents where the households are coming from, you know, all over, uh, the North End and all over, um, the county in general. And now to fast forward to the business at hand, I'd like to explain Resolution 37, 200, 38, 2017 is, uh, what we would like is to approve the Palm Beach County's conceptual master plan and adopt it as our own. Further, authorize the city manager to enter negotiations for an interlocal agreement to construct, operate and maintain the North County District Park in substantial conformity with Exhibit A. And Exhibit A will be explained a little later. But also authorize the city manager to expend up to $11.2 million to fund all projects, all costs associated with the project. And of course, it will be all, uh, funded by the One-Cent Sales Surtax. Um, before you is the entirety of the master plan developed by the county. Uh, there's a lot of different elements to it. It is over 80 acres of park. Um, we have multipurpose fields. We have an indoor sports complex. We have parking support facilities. We have, uh, playgrounds and, uh, retention and drainage, jogging trails. And to further explain what Phase 1 would look like is what's highlighted in the pink box. We have, uh, we have about five large-scale multipurpose fields and, uh, parking, a clubhouse, a meeting room. And listed on the left are the different sorts of, uh, elements of the project, from design to construction and what will be their field lighting, turf care facility, et cetera. Now in this slide, I'd like to show you, uh, what we had developed as a staff and what we would have liked to seen, uh, develop and what the county had actually come, uh, come together and, and developed was actually quite similar. They, they had listened to us and they had listened to the needs of the, of the North County. And that is, uh, uh, actually a plan that works a little bit better than what we had come up with. There's more acreage for field space for play and, uh, more parking. I'd like to, you know, as count, as, uh, Mayor Moreno had stated, this has been a traveling roadshow and we have been, uh, gaining support from all of the North County municipalities. And they're all stated there, um, you know, as said, it's a lot of working together. And of course, there's several benefits that you can imagine. First, it gives us a competitive advantage when attempting to bring in large tournaments. And in the summertime, off-season, you know, it would definitely help, uh, drive economic development, hoteliers, shopping, restaurateurs. We have a large-scale tournament, uh, next week. You can just check out the mall. It will be packed with different clubs and groups, jerseys and, and et cetera. Um, where there is a, uh, a, uh, sport dynamic that, you know, will facilitate growth. We have facilities now, but we are at capacity. We are exceeding what we have and this will just help, uh, drive the further, um, youth development in the city. And then of course, there is a, a strong social, um, benefit as well. As parents, you don't have to com, compromise. You don't have to have one parent take one child to one park and another parent take another child to another park. You can all be in one large hub of fields as, you know, a soccer parent or a baseball parent. And, and then that's when you have, you have your kids that become friends with others and, and that's where you develop longstanding family relationships. Some of the best relationships you'll ever have are, are started in these parks. And with that, uh, staff recommends approval of Resolution 38, 2017.
Madam Mayor, if I may, thank you, Daniel, uh, for that presentation. Uh, just to give you a little bit of sense of timeline, uh, the reason we're coming to you, uh, tonight is that we want to be able to accomplish three things, which is the conceptual approval of the county's master plan, the authorization to enter into, enter a local agreement and, uh, authorize the funds necessary to construct the park. The reason we're doing that is so that we, the, the county, uh, Parks and Recreation Department can go before the Board of County Commissioners and show that our intent. We have the intent to develop the master plan portion that we have. We have the money and the authorization to proceed and we have the authorization to enter into, uh, negotiations with the interlocal agreement. That shows commitment. In addition to that, uh, provided the county commission approves, the same thing basically comes back, we will then, uh, sit down, work out the terms necessary for interlocal agreement. That will come back to you, uh, for your final decision as to all the terms and conditions of the interlocal. Uh, once, if that is approved by the council, then it goes, the interlocal agreement will go to the county commission and, and hopefully they would approve that as well. In the meantime, um, we're more than happy to work out, uh, additional, uh, meetings, uh, for, for the public. Be happy to have, uh, some type of public informational workshop here in, uh, I'd like to wait until we have that interlocal agreement. Uh, I, I don't like to bring things forward that I haven't got finished yet.
Yeah, we're not going to put the cart before the horse. It, absolutely.
I would like to say that we're all in agreement with, with what this is and at, rather than have things change and then, then the public say, well gee, this is not what you showed us. So I want to feel comfortable that what we tell them is, is what we're going to get. So it is a process and, um, this is our first biggest step in order to get it in front of the Board of County Commissioners so that we can, uh, nail this thing down. And we're moving rather quickly, uh, and, um, it, depending on the timing of the Board of County Commissioners, I would like to think we could have this thing wrapped up in August or September so we can start construction. Uh, we're ready to go. Uh, sooner we get it built, the sooner we get the kids on the field, the better we're all going to feel. So this is exciting for us and we're really looking forward to this challenge along with all the others that we have for this.
Daniel, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And actually, anyone wishing to discuss? I have a card, Michelle Lewis. You've been waiting patiently. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Lewis. I live at 134 Via Candado Way, which is in Mirabellet, Mirasol. I'm also a newlywed.
Congratulations.
Um, so in the process of moving between Mirabellet, Mirasol, um, and also Ball and Isles with my new husband that I met, guess where?
Playing pickleball.
Close. Playing tennis at the Palm Beach Gardens Tennis Center. And we were married last summer. So of course I have a passion for tennis, um, not only for adults, um, but for children because as you all know, we have an opioid epidemic, we have problems with drugs and I grew up where there was an advertisement that said, "Do sports, not drugs." And when I was in high school, I was so busy doing sports, there was no time for any of that nonsense. And I am so proud to live in this community of Palm Beach Gardens. I am so proud of all of you for your time, especially at this hour of the night when I'm usually sleeping. Um, I'm just so proud to live here. I'm so excited about Resolution 38 that, um, I, I'm just so grateful to speak to you, to let you know that as captain of the tennis team, um, just this year now, um, we all support, uh, Resolution Number 38. And not only for the children, there, um, is not adequate parking right now. So this would be a big benefit to the many people that within our own community, um, and as the slideshow mentioned, many members, um, in various other communities such as Wellington, such as, um, you know, North Palm Beach, they come from all over to enjoy, um, the magic at the Palm Beach Gardens Tennis Center and the rest of the sports complex. And I don't know if any, you know anything about tennis, but usually you start off with love, you play a set and then there's match. So for me, at Palm Beach Gardens Tennis Center, love set up my husband and I for a perfect match. So, so, so just as we had Cherry here who had a passion for golf, um, this passion creates magic in the community from children to many older people that I get to play tennis with. So this, this, um, Resolution Number 38 is, is so exciting and it's going to be such an asset to our community for so many decades to come. I just want to thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Michelle.
It's nice to have another Mirabella resident, uh, speaking to us. And as far as anybody who's ever seen me play tennis, they know I have no idea what I'm doing.
All right, so I'm bringing this back for discussion. Anybody have any comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
First of all, I think this is wonderful. This park is just going to be incredible. It's a tremendous addition and I s, fully support the park. I'm looking at the resolution and if you look at it on page two, it says appropriations of the City Code of Ordinances authorize the city managers to expend any necessary funds from the One-Cent Sales Surtax Capital Improvement Fund up to $11,200, um, to fund all costs associated with the construction of the county-owned parkland. Basically, that's writing a blank and mind you, I believe we have the, the finest city manager you could have. But we just, if we pass this as written, we just gave the city manager $11.2 million, um, to expend. I, I think that it would be our obligation to look, I want to see what we're doing with that money. I want to see every, how every dollar of that money is spent. I think we have an obligation as a, as a, as a board to, to review that. Second of all, if you move a little bit further, it says the city council further authorizes the city manager to take all actions and execute all documents, execute all documents necessary to construct the identified area, which includes but is not limited to funding, staffing, procuring professional services and other related activities. Once again, I think we have a fiduciary obligation to see how Once again, I think we have a fiduciary obligation to see how these dollars are being spent. And if you look at the top of the resolution, it says, "authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an interlocal agreement." Well, once again, I don't know what the terms of that interlocal agreement are. I want to have, I believe that we have a fiduciary obligation, I believe it would be a malfeasance, to authorize the entry into an interlocal agreement by someone other than ourselves. I think we need to sign off on the interlocal agreement, and we need to see how the money is spent. Finally, I think that we need a workshop, and I think that should be part of this resolution as well. Because we don't need to tell the people what we're going to do. We need to ask our customers what they want. And the proposal's beautiful, it's fantastic, but I'd hate to spend all this money and find out that we're not meeting their needs. So, I think, once again, I think that this should be contingent on us actually holding a workshop and seeing if we're meeting their needs. On a broader sense, we're going to be spending some $30 to $30 to $35 million of this one cent sales tax. And I would like to see a workshop. If I'm going to be asked to spend $30 million, I certainly want some input from a lot of people in the community who are, who could provide us with tremendous insight, whether it be people from the mall, people from the chamber, people from the corridor. I want, I would like to see where we're going with that. And an idea was brought up about having a long-range planning committee. It was during the course of the campaign. And I think that we really need to see where we're going, and that we need to, that this $30 million really tells us where we're going. So, I would like to see workshops for this proposal, and I'd like to see a workshop to see where we're going with this money, and then come back and evaluate it based upon the input that we get. I think that it's a really important decision, it'll be the most important decision that we make over the course of this three-year term.
Max, do you have, can you read in our charter where our responsibilities lie and the city manager's responsibilities lie?
Yeah, I can almost cite them by memory. Basically, the way it works is plans are brought to you, and you choose to fund them or not. And as far as the planning of what's in the park, just in the defense of the city staff, they've spent years analyzing the needs for the athletic programs in the city, what's needed, whether it's soccer, baseball, pickleball, tennis, you name it. They've spent, I'd say, more than half of the nine years that I've been here analyzing the needs of our sports facility. So, at the risk of editorializing, and certainly no disrespect to the public, people that aren't professionals in this particular area are not the people you ask for input on what's needed. You have a whole group of professionals sitting in front of you to the left that have spent their professional careers preparing for this, for the jobs that they possess. And as far as, as far as the interlocal is concerned, if you're concerned about the word "execute" in the resolution, that certainly can be removed. But just so you all know, the city manager already has the authority to execute interlocal agreements for the city up to his spending limit. And we have authorized the city manager, on numerous occasions this council has in the past, to do this very thing. As far as the way the surtax money is to be proposed, to be expended, the last council already made that decision, and earmarked and identified numerous capital improvement projects, of which this was one that was considered, if I remember correctly.
And budgeted for $11.2 million.
As a follow-up, the resolution that I would propose as a motion, I would, I would say that a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, preliminarily approving Palm Beach County North District Park Conceptual Master Plan 2017, authorizing the city manager to negotiate, I take out the words, and execute an interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County. As far as the expenditure of funds, up to $11 million, I would want to be able to review that.
Isn't this, isn't the Budget and Oversight Committee responsible for overseeing that?
I think they're responsible for spending $11 million.
Matt, may I interject real quick?
Sure.
The $11.2 million, if you remember when it was first presented for this park, was for the purchase and construction of. We don't know, I mean, from what our conversations with staff have been, I don't think there's an opportunity for us to purchase the park. But that was more than half of the original $11.2 million. The number that I've heard, and I think you must have heard as well, was about $5 million for the construction of Phase One. I think that's where we are going to expect to see the numbers. Certainly, we're going to have to be a part of whatever contract comes up to the city for who is going to build it, how we're going to build it, how we're going to spend those dollars. This resolution really isn't meant to tell him that he can spend $11 million, but he can spend up to, but it's going to be up to us to decide what is going to be the final project. Now, the execution is something that I could support removing from that resolution.
But the way it's worded, if you look at it carefully, what it says is that he's authorized to spend up to $11.2 million.
Up to, not, not, he's not going to spend, but he can spend up to.
We're giving him a blank check, which is great, but I think that we need to very carefully watch how, I think that's our fiduciary responsibility. That's the only thing that we're real...
Can you please speak into the microphone?
...work on. So, that's kind of my feeling on it. I've got a contrary, or a proposal...
Contrary.
...which I'll hand out and pass down, please.
Madam Mayor?
It's going to be my motion.
I would like to say something, please.
Sure.
Thank you. This is not unusual. This has been done many times in the past. There are checks and balances in purchasing and contract management in this city like no other city has. I don't run around writing blank checks, and quite frankly, I'm offended by what you're saying. I don't write blank checks. I don't act irresponsibly. I act within the law. I act within the purchasing procedures. And if you want to delay this project for another year or two and drag it through the process in which you identified, we can certainly do that. And you can talk to those people in the audience out here, from the sports fields and the commissions that need it out there, and tell them they can wait for a couple of years until we go the process that you're recognizing.
I certainly think that we need...
I'm offended by your comments.
Okay, I think that we need this project. I think the way that this resolution is written is not consistent with what we want to do. I think that we need to do it as quickly as possible and bring it about, but I think that we need to change the wording of this so that it says that we recommend to the city council...
All right.
That the city manager recommends to the city council the expenditure of any necessary funds up to $11,200,000.
Okay, I think we need to give some more, some more people an opportunity, and I do actually have one more card passed Mayor Eric Javlin.
For the record, Eric Javlin, 184 Thornton Drive, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. Ladies and gentlemen, speaking as a former councilperson sitting, having sat there for 25 years, and have worked, having worked with this gentleman to my right for 17 of those years, I trust this man to do what he says he's going to do. Now, if you want to delay this project for a year, as has been stated, then you could do what you want to do. What matters, well, Councilman Lane is suggesting, but if you want to get this done, you'll pass Resolution 38, and you'll pass it tonight. Now, whoa, 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 okay? And look, you know, I've sat here a long time. We built the Russo Fields. We get, same way. We gave him authorization to spend X amount of money, up to a certain amount of money, and he did it. We're going to dedicate those fields on Saturday. That's how we do things in this city. We get them done. And if you're going to have workshops and ask a lot of people to come in and build this horse, it's going to end up as an elephant. So, let's not do that, ladies and gentlemen, please. Let's do it right, the way we've been doing it for all these years. That's all I have to say. Please do the right thing.
Thank you, Mayor Javlin.
Mayor, I'd like to second Mr. Javlin. And I do hear what Matt's saying, and there was exposure to conversations about having a workshop globally on the penny sales tax, which I'm sure will encompass the expenditures of, of the projects. As far as listening to Matt addressed, we need to listen to the public. When this was proposed at a council meeting four, five, whatever, months ago, this house was packed, and we heard loud and clear. I did, anyway. And, you know, I know Duke sat right there, and he wants this virus called soccer moved off of his baseball fields. And with Alton coming in, and the amount of children that are going to be coming, Alton's moving along very quickly. And I think this project needs to move along very quickly as well. It's going back to trusting staff when we paralleled that with the Budget Review Committee. And I've learned to trust Ron in the year or so that I've known him, and the city wouldn't be moving along as well-tuned as it would be without trusting the city manager. I know Matt's not going there, I'm just saying, I want to move this along. I'm a Parks guy, and I support Eric, and I support this community, and I listen to these people wanting this park. We need to, this is not just, you know, this is, we're bringing the city into the future, and that park is part of that.
Thank you, Carl. Michelle?
We spent quite a bit of time earlier talking about the Budget Review Committee and it being an independent citizen body. They are going to have to review the expenditures, and they're going to look at every penny that's being spent on this. There is a system of checks and balances. So, I agree with Carl, and I agree with Eric. I think this needs to move along. We've heard from the citizens and the staff, and we are going to be checked, and we are going to have to approve, according to the city manager, the interlocal agreement. He's going to negotiate it, but we still have to, it's going to come back before us.
Exactly.
So, this is, this has to get going.
Mark?
Well, you know, I understand where Matt's coming from, because we went through a whole long, year-long campaign about transparency and expenditures, and a lot of talk about workshops on where the $11 million was going to go, and the other $30 million. And I understand all that, and I understand where he's coming from. But at the same time, I've got active kids that are playing in these programs. I have no reason to feel that our staff and our city manager would do anything that would jeopardize our budgets going forward. It's not like we're looking to go into the general fund to expend more than what we want to for reasons that are not really what we want and need. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't speak to the legal terms. We have a city attorney. Matthew's obviously a very good attorney as well, but there's no way I'm not going to support this going forward. We need, we need fields. I've got my soccer friends here, and baseball people as well, and I have no reason to not feel confident with the way the process will go forward. I think it's going to be very transparent. Our residents are so excited about it already. We've talked to people everywhere for a very long time. So, don't take this as being a negative, Matthew. I just think that maybe we're overlooking some of the details, and let's just go ahead and hopefully, we can have one more comment, and then we can maybe vote.
And I certainly think that this park is going to be a wonderful addition.
Can you speak into your microphone?
I certainly think this park is going to be a wonderful addition. I couldn't be more excited about it. I'm looking more at the way the resolution is written, rather than the concept. I think the concept's fantastic, and I think that our city manager is exceptional, as is our staff. But I just don't like the way the resolution's written as I read it.
Matt, we are hearing that. Yeah, we understand that with you.
We have one more card. Anthony Bedala. Name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Bedala, 11216 Orange Hibiscus Lane, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. First of all, I want to thank everybody, mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name is Anthony Bedala. I am the president of the BBG YAA, and over the past three to four months, I've been really impressed with the way this, people from the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Marcy Tinsley, Mrs. Marino, staff members, city manager, has assisted each other in dealing with these other communities to get this park to this point. As far as the need, nobody knows better than myself what the need is. The city has the numbers. I see every day, I hear every day, how we need to cancel this or move this around. God forbid there's rain, stacking practices between soccer, baseball. I hear it in the meetings between football, sharing space. Personally, from what I know, they nailed it. This is the facility that's needed here in this county. When the other communities gave up their, whatever it may be, so-called rights to have this county build this facility to the city of Palm Beach Gardens and watched the way they operated, the joy that went through what, for what I represent, was nothing less than pure joy. So, in hearing what everybody's saying, I just want to thank everybody for the efforts that they put forward. And I really hope, because time is of an essence, and given the fact from the timeline I heard today, if this could get done in that timeline, possibly, I mean, nobody's going to benefit but the kids. That's what I represent. That's all I really care about. I don't care about any of the political piece of it, how it's written, anything else. What I care about is that I could put another thousand kids out there, keep them off the street, keep them doing something that's productive. That's the way my kids grow up, and I see the fruit of my labor. So, thank you very much, and hopefully, we get the vote passed here, and we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for approaching, for coming, and there's no question, we need, we need these facilities.
Anthony, thank you. I actually do have a couple of comments. I know it's, it's 10 after 10, actually going a little longer than we had planned. But this is very important to our community, and as Daniel and I went around and talked to other communities, and Eric and Marcy before, before me, the importance of the park is, you can't put a price tag on it, but the fiduciary responsibility of the city, the city manager and Allen Owens have always had the city first and foremost, and have done a tremendous job. Seventeen years ago, when Ron came on board, we had a $40 million budget and $700,000 in reserve, and we're one bad decision away from being bankrupt. In that time, we now have 29% of our budget in reserves, and they've done that because they've watched every penny. They've done that because they're residents too, and it's some, it's their money that they're spending, not just ours. So, I am, I, as the mayor, am very for this, and I would like a, at this time, I would like a motion for Resolution 38, please.
Madam Mayor, as Eric Javlin would say, I proudly move this Resolution 38 point, or 38, 2017.
I'd like to second, if that's okay.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you very much, all, and thank you all for staying to listen to this. Okay.
Andrew Slick.
We have, we have several more items on the agenda. We can take five minutes, if you would like.
No, let's just keep moving.
No, we're, okay. You can go get, go and get, go and get a water. Okay, so, go ahead. Do you need, we'll take a five-minute recess. We are back in session. And...
I've got a bunch of stuff here.
Items for council action discussion. So, first off, we have appointments to boards and committees, and you all have a sheet in front of you. And what I'd like to do is go down, but as we've talked about how everybody has a special niche, I took the liberty of assigning, and we'll start at the Palm Beach County League of Cities. Now, I am, I am on the board, I should say, I will be sworn in as the board member for the League of Cities, May, whatever date it is. And what I would like to do is... And what I would like to do is appoint Vice Mayor Marciano as the voting member, and all of us become alternates. And if Mark is not there, then we are alternates, and we vote. So we will all be alternates for the Palm Beach County League of Cities. The North County Intergovernmental is always done, it was always the mayor and the city manager, so that would be myself and Mr. Ferris. The Palm Beach County Metropolitan Planning Organization, it was Mayor Javelin for quite a long time, and I was the alternate, and so I have been moved up to the regular member. And I know how much Carl would like to be involved with things having to do with traffic, so I ask, I, I would like Carl to be the alternate there. Sea Coast is just the city manager, so there is no one from our, our council on that. The Bioscience Land Protection Advisory Board, they usually like the mayor, but I, so I would like to have Mark, because the mayor has plenty to do. I would like Mr. Marciano to be the appointee, and Mr. Lane to be the alternate. Palm Beach County Workforce Alliance Consortium is the mayor, so that would be me. And I would like Rochelle to be my alternate on that, please. North Lake Boulevard Task Force is, traffic, Carl? You demand?
Yeah, we're going to get some people.
Okay. And I, there is no alternate appointed, nor required, but if anybody would like to fill that seat, that would be fine. Palm Beach County North Economic Development Committee, I would like Rochelle to do that, and there is no alternate, but if there is an alternate that someone would like to, to do that, you're more, more than welcome to. Palm Beach North Government Affairs Committee, as Matthew said, he's been attending for 10 years, so I would like him to continue in that manner. And we are all alternates for that, and if I'm in town, I will attend also. I do enjoy getting the opportunity to meet with our other mayors and elected officials from around the county. Treasure Coast Regional Planning is, it's just listed on here for informational purposes only. The appointments are made by the municipal league, and Mayor Abby Brennan is actually the appointee, and I have been made the alternate for that. But you also have in front of you a list of committee opportunities through the League of Cities. Some are county and regional committees, others are just through the league, and I know that you were all at lunch yesterday. I apologize for missing lunch, I was at the hospital with my mom. She's okay, nothing to worry about. But it is a very good way of getting involved in county and state opportunities. You do have to fill out a consent to serve form, which I have had Patty attach to this. And I would like you, I encourage you to call the league and find out what, what your personalities would match. So, as we know, Carl is, as he says, he's the traffic guy, and Rochelle has been very good with healthcare, so I, I would encourage you to call over there. I know that it's the Economy Task Force is something that they're really looking for someone to be involved in, but they do have some meat, so any of these, any of these council, any of these boards or councils will be great. And I, it's not like we don't have enough to do, but if you choose to have more to do, you're more than welcome to sign up for any of these committees. But you do, for the county and regional committees, you have to do a consent to serve form. And the other, the league committees, within the league themselves locally, those, you can just ask which committees need people. So that would be my recommendation for boards and councils, and I, if everyone is in agreement with that, then we just go ahead and move on to the next item.
Ma, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Make a suggestion?
Sure.
The four of us attended the Division One luncheon for the League of Cities, District One, yeah, on Wednesday.
Luncheon yesterday, yes.
It became apparent during the luncheon that there could be the potential for sunshine law violations if multiple council members attend that. And I'm making the proposal that the representative for the League of Cities, which would be you, or Mark, the alternate, be the representative that goes to that, so that we don't have that potential conflict.
That, that, or we just coordinate and we rotate?
Only one, or rotate, either way.
We rotate who goes. This way, we all can, we all can mingle with other, other members of the north end.
That's fine, too. I just don't feel comfortable.
Yes, so I, I like the idea of...
This one was different, because any topic that they discussed has the potential in some way, shape, or form to come before us.
That would be a good idea.
What, yes?
Mayor, it would give us a little breathing room also, if maybe in, on all these meetings, there had to be six meetings that we all were there in the last month. And maybe we should collectively rotate even those a bit, as a representative of all, one of us for all five.
I think some of the meetings, we need to go as a council, because we need to be out in public, like the chamber meetings and whatnot.
Not the chamber, right.
But yes, and, a lot of these, though, is for informational purposes for all of us, so we have to really balance our time, but we have to also balance what communication we have with each other during those meetings.
And being new, Carl, I think, and now we all want to experience all of them and see what...
Do we?
It won't take long for most of us to say that.
You've been here longer.
But Maria, maybe if there's one that you collectively want us to all be there, put it out there, so we're not just going, just responding to an invite.
Right. Well, I think collectively, we all need to be at the chamber events and the PGA Corridor Association, Association events, because those are really our, our neighborhood.
Exactly.
We can, League of Cities, the luncheon, I think the, not the district luncheon, but the regular luncheon, where all of the, all of the cities bring multiple people to those meetings. I think it behooves us to attend those.
Okay. Well, put it out there when, on the emails, because a lot, we're just accepting invites, so let's, let's open up a little bit during these things, and somebody say something.
No, I think you're right.
Okay.
I think you're right. So, but as, as far as we're doing the, the board appointments here, are we okay with all of this?
Yes.
Okay, so we will do that, and like I said, I encourage you, I know we all said we have a lot of committees and meetings that we go to, but if you want to have an impact of what's going on locally, or countywide, or statewide, there are some important committees in the league that you can really help with. Next on the agenda was the discussion about the Forum Club, and I would actually, I'm a member of the Forum Club and have been for years, and I pay for it myself, and I would encourage all of us to pay for our own membership into the Forum Club, because by the time you're done with the membership and the meetings, it's about $1,000 a year per person, and I don't think that's something that we can ask our taxpayers to pay. So that would be my thought on that. Anyone else?
I agree. I mean, city stuff, stuff that happens in the city is one thing, but those other events are nice to attend, but I don't think we all have to be at all of them, and we don't get a lot that we're bringing back to the city. It's always nice to hear something from somewhere, from somebody, but it's not necessary to spend that kind of dollars.
I, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. We had other items for discussion. I think, Matthew, you brought something up earlier.
Yeah, hi, I'd like to talk about how the agenda, I'd like to talk a little bit how the agenda's focused. I believe that our job is to obtain as much information as possible, make correct decisions, and do so in a transparent manner. I think our decision-making is why we're supposed to be here, why we're paid. And I'd like to suggest a format that would have us not making decisions so late in the evening, when people are not here. I would like it to be this way. I, I would suggest that we start with the pledge, go to the roll call, additions, deletions, and modifications, which is all the same, give out any awards and acknowledgements, do comments from the public, and kind of encourage them to make comments in three categories. First, for people who are coming to City Hall who need our help, who are just saying, hey, I'm not, there's an issue, I need your help. And we see those, and I find those to be the most gratifying and interesting. Second, suggestions on how to improve the city, and third, comments on issues that are facing the council. So I'd kind of like to structure it that way. Make it more of a, an occasion for action, as opposed to anything else. So then I would like to move up items for council discussion. And I would like to consolidate council discussion and items of resident interest. I'm less interested in knowing where the council members went, but I really am interested in hearing what you think. I can't tell you how often I wonder, gee, I wonder what Mark, or Rochelle, or Maria, or Carl think about this issue, or are they thinking about this issue? Is it an issue that's important to them? And we only have 36 opportunities in a three-year term to speak with each other and hear each other's ideas. I'd like this agenda to push up that section. I don't really care where you all went. I don't care where I really went. But I really do care what you have to say, what's your ideas, what's brainstorming, what, you know, what issues are important to you? And, and that I'd like to hear, so I would like to move that up a little bit. Then I would like to move into the consent agenda, public hearings, resolutions, city managers' report, city attorneys' report. And as far as presentations, I think we should have those on an, on an as-needed basis at a time that we designate. But I'd like to hit things when we're fresh, and we can really explore them in depth, and hopefully come up with the right decision. So my motion is, is that the format be the pledge, the roll call, additions, deletions, and modifications. Fourth, we give out any awards and acknowledgements. Fifth, we get comments from the public, which is really so important. Six, items for council discussion, and we actually have discussion. Seventh, the consent. Eight, public hearings. Ninth, resolutions. Tenth, the city managers' report. Eleventh, city attorneys' report, and presentations on an as-needed basis. I'm sure you all have ideas on how the agenda should be focused as well, and can improve on my idea, but that's just kind of a draft of what my thoughts are.
As mayor, I'll reserve comment, I'll go last. Anybody have any comments?
Okay.
But I do have some.
Do you want three minutes? I'd like, I'd appreciate your input.
Carl?
Um, Matt, I hear what you're saying as well, and sometimes, sometimes I've seen, we've had children sit here a little bit late. But I think we have the ability to move those around while, when we get up here on the dais. If I had thoughts of the agenda, I would probably get with the city manager before the, before the day of city council, to go over maybe a, something that might take precedence over one thing or the other, because as far as what I'm understanding, the city manager sets the agenda. And with the mayor's input. So there has to be a hierarchy amongst the council members, so I kind of go with the flow. Sometimes I'd like to change something up, but I would always want to go to the city manager first, and then have, let the mayor set the meeting the way she sees fit.
And I see, I see we're going to have a comment from the public. You wanted, you wanted a comment from the public.
Real quick, I, I understand where Matt's coming from.
Yeah, I do, too.
Because it is true that, you know, sometimes it's late, and now is when we want to talk, and now everyone wants to go home. Maybe what we could do, and maybe we need to get you guys at staff level to kind of come up with a suggestion, but maybe just in the items of resident interest, if we just want to list the things that we want to talk about, so that way the residents know that this is a priority of ours, and they can hear about it early in the meeting, and if they want to stay, or if they want to go home and go online and listen to it, or watch it online, they can go home and actually listen, because they don't know what we want to talk about. They don't know what's going to come up in conversation. I have a couple of things that I want to bring up, that I wouldn't have, it would have been a good thing to have at least told the residents while they were still here. These are things that are my, my thought process, and we'll talk about it later on. So maybe that's a quicker way to kind of get to the point of what we, what our, what our priorities are going to be, or what our discussion topics are going to be, and then we can always talk about them later.
I'm concerned that if it goes that way, we could get so bogged down in so many different topics. We each meet with the city manager once a week, if there is a subject, and, and that's outside, you know, allowable by sunshine, so if, if we have a subject we want to bring up, the agenda, time, has to be built in. It could be put, we can ask to have it be put on the agenda, so that one time it's one subject, it's, it's, it's something Mark, that's important to Mark, next time something important to Matt. And unless something drastic comes up in, in the middle that you feel has to be addressed, I don't think we can just leave it open in the middle, and not get to the other business that has to be scheduled first.
Well, we have one card from, from Joni Elias. Hello there.
Joni Elias, General and Domin Ed Way. If you've been to as many meetings as I have, you would not have decided or put the agenda in that order. And I've only been coming to council meetings for 25 years, so I have some experience. When you're talking about presentations later, many of the presentations that are made are to small children's groups, basketball teams, baseball teams. It's 11:30, you want to put that later on? They come, their parents come, their little brothers and sisters come, they get the presentation, they get their pictures taken, and they leave. They are not interested in sitting here, listening to a lot of people talk. One. When you talk about interests to the public, maybe you don't care whether somebody went to lunch and you didn't. Some of us do want to know what our council members are doing with their time. I know what you're doing with your time, because I've been around, and I probably know more than what you do about what your time is going to be. I do know more. At that time, you can say that there are some things that you are thinking about. But many times, when you said, when you, and I agree with Michelle, talk to the city manager before you start saying something to everybody, because you make a statement, and the next thing you know, it's in the paper, or somebody is calling. Do you know what they decided to do? And you didn't decide to do it, you want to talk about it. So transparency is great, but watch how transparent you want to be. So think about that. And as far as the, the agenda, you have to have the consent agenda first, then that's over with. It's, it's, all it is, is bookkeeping or, or housekeeping. Those are housekeeping details that have to be done by law. Then you go into your resolutions, and your quasar judicial hearings, and there are people that are here for those specifically. And then there's the standbys and hanger-oners, and the hobby people like me. I'll stay here forever.
And we hope that's the case.
It used to be later than 11:30. But when you think about these things, sometimes when you first start out in any job, you get ideas, sleep on them for at least a month, two months, six months, before you say something. Thank you.
Thank you. So, as, now I'm, I'm going to conclude this meeting, since it is...
If you don't, if you don't mind, before we get too far afield, just, just as a point of clarification, so everybody understands, because it's easy to, you know, it's, it's a new job for everybody. The agenda is an administrative function, it's the city manager's responsibility. The city manager sets the order of the agenda. If an individual council member wants something on the agenda, it's incumbent upon the individual council member to bring that up during discussion, and get consensus from the commission, from the council to have it added to a future agenda. That it may or may not get on the agenda, depending on what the consensus of the, of your fellow council members are. And as far as other items and things like that, yes, it is certainly advisable to speak to the city manager first, if you have an issue, or it is an area of concern, because it may very well already have been addressed, because that's his full-time job, and he has a full-time staff to address those issues. Or it may be something that they're not aware of, and it'd be nice for the administration to be aware of it before you pull their pants down in public. So it's a good idea to bring those things up in private, rather than do it here. And that's not a lack of transparency, that's professionalism, and it's professional courtesy and decorum, rather than surprise and ambush on the dais, because what it does, is I've seen it happen a long time, because, no disrespect to any of you, I've been doing this a lot long... of you, I've been doing this a lot longer than all of you two. And what it precipitates is a degeneration of decorum on the dais, and it makes the council look foolish. And it makes the administration look, or appear as if it doesn't know what it's doing, which is honestly, is so beyond the opposite of what happens in this city that it's staggering to even consider it. So as your city attorney, that's my advice. And as far as the agenda concerned, like I said, that's an administrative function, it's in the city manager's purview. This is a council manager form of government. It's his responsibility, not the council's.
I move to leave the agenda alone.
I don't know if we're supposed to vote on that.
Just, we're not voting on it.
We're not, but we're not voting on this. But what I meant earlier by, I'm closing this portion of the, of the agenda, and I just want to say that I do realize that there are times where things, from a time perspective, might need, need to be moved around. However, we only do this once a month, and I think we can be here till, what is our time limit, 11 o'clock, 11:30? 11:30. We still have another 40 minutes. Not that we're going to do that, but we do need to have discussion as a council. We do need to have input from the community. Thank you, Joni, for saying that you like to, you are interested in knowing what we do. I think it's important to the community to know what we do. And it only takes us 10 minutes to tell everybody what we've done, so I don't think that's a big holdup on the, on the agenda. And our petitioners, when they're here, they, they sometime take a long time, which push our, I mean, Don Herring, God bless his soul, I mean, he just walked out the door, but, you know, Don can go on a little bit, too, as several of our other planners can. So it is incumbent to us to allow them the time that they need, but they also have to realize that we do have our meeting only once a month, and it is sometimes going to go to 11:30. And if it goes past 11:30, as it did, I think, February, we went on a Thursday and then a Friday. So I, I think that the agenda as written has been working well, and I appreciate your comments on the agenda. We're going to move...
I have a comment.
Sure.
And I don't really want to spend much time on this. I did talk both with the city manager and the city attorney about charter review process, if we can have that brought up at the next council meeting in some way, shape, or form to give us an idea of the timing, when the next appropriate election would be, how the best way to approach it, so that we can start discussing that, because that's something that we need to do, knowing that the next election won't be until August of 18, but probably November. And then also with the legislation for an additional homestead exemption, I'd like the staff to tell us exactly how that may impact our budgets going forward. Not today, but, no, but I'd like to have some type of presentation to our residents so they understand the impact that they, that we probably will have on our budget. And that's all my, my two items of council discussion that I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we're winding down. Anybody else? This is your, this is, what do they say when it's the last, when you're doing the auction? All in, all done?
I wanted to just touch on something on this speakers bureau thing again, I don't bring it up again, but I love the idea, I love the exposure of getting into the communities, but we've also been bombarded with negativity at times, with people wearing red shirts, the opiate addiction, or the sober homes. We were attacked on that. The Shady Lakes thing with the previous council. And I want to make sure that, that when we go into these communities, that there's a understanding that it's not an ambush on one council person. We want to make sure that our, I personally would like to make sure that I go in with a positive platform. And so if our communities, because a discussion with a council member and having us in our community, I think is great for exposure and transparency, but if there's a underlying motive to get a council person into their community for something that's negative, then maybe that should be brought into council chambers, where staff can do a presentation for that community. So I would just like to put that out there before we start launching us into something that could be a shark tank. That's my thought.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but that's our job, is to go hear the good and the bad, so I don't, so I'm prepared to go into a place and hear whatever comments. I mean, we're not telling them stuff that they don't know. It's not our job to tell them what to do. It's our job to listen to them and bring it back here. So if someone has real heavy concerns, our job is to go listen to them and bring it back. And, and look, it's only going to be a problem if you're combative with the residents. I don't think any of us are going to be combative. We all want to listen, we all want to help and do the best.
Yeah, I was just using like the sober homes for an example, where we were on the leading edge of learning at that moment, even when they were doing presentations here. Even, you know, Max was scrambling to, to get information back to the community. And if we were to get into something where we weren't preeducated on, then, you know, that's my thought on it.
I think the most important thing for us as council members is to be prepared. If we go to a meeting, bring evidence, bring a staff member to support you. I brought Candace, came with me yesterday to the radio station, and thank, thank you for doing that, because she would slide little comments to me, because I was having some brain freezes. So I think it's incumbent on us to be prepared, that's the Boy Scout motto, and be aware that, yes, sometimes we're going to be in an environment where it might not be the friendliest, but we have to, we are still their representatives, so whatever it is, we need to be prepared and maybe take someone from staff with us who can help us, guide us along.
There's also different types of meetings that we're going to be going to. Some of them, as Mark said, are going to be listening, where they want us to come in and hear about a particular issue or, or problem that they're having. And then there's other times, they're going to want us to come and, and update them on something we're doing. So knowing that ahead of time, too, can allow us to plan, as the mayor said, with, with what to go in with.
Thank you. All right. So I think we have sucked all the air out of the room this evening, so I would like to have a, have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a good evening.
I'll second.
Have a nice night.